Good evening. The October 27th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the Clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Isles?
Here.
Councilmember Nusma?
Here.
Councilmember Burns is not here. Councilmember Sufferton?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Rogers?
Here.
Councilmember Harakaris?
Here.
Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Present.
Mayor Biss?
Here. We have a quorum present in person and are therefore prepared to do our work for the evening. It is my understanding that both council members, Davis and Sufferton, have communicated their need to participate virtually for allowable reasons. Is there a motion to approve that participation?
So move.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves approval of councilmember Sufferton and Davis's virtual participation. Councilmember Rogers, seconds. Would the Clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Harakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and their virtual participation is approved. The next item on the agenda is my public announcements and proclamations. Before I get to the proclamations, I want to highlight a news release that the city put out just within the last few hours. The last week was a really traumatic week in the city of Evanston with a series of abductions of our residents on the part of masked anonymous individuals representing themselves as federal agents. And so we've received a number of understandable questions about what the city has to do about this circumstance. And I would encourage folks to look at the full statement, which details some of our responses. But the key headline is that we will respond to incidents involving individuals claiming to be federal agents, just as we would to any other incident report. And I think this is essential, not only as a matter of basic justice and morality, but also as a matter of public safety, that we have a responsibility to keep our residents safe. And while we certainly would never interfere with the appropriate exercise of federal law enforcement entities' duties, we have in many instances had no evidence whatsoever or any indication even that that's what was going on. And so we will move forward with that approach and do all that we can to keep our residents safe. And I want to thank the police chief and the corporation council and the city manager and others on our team for their collaboration in this effort. It's an enormously difficult situation and one that has caused enormous, enormous fear across our community. And we continue to stand ready to work with community partners to do literally anything people think of that might help keep folks safe in this deranged environment. I now move on to the two proclamations. The first is about Domestic Violence Awareness Month, which I know that we have Director Ogbo from the Department of Health and Human Services and others from his team here to receive this proclamation. Whereas, the city of Evanston recognizes the designation of October as the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And whereas, in October 1987, the first Domestic Violence Awareness Month was observed, and by 1989, Congress passed Public Law 101-112, designating October as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Such legislation has passed every year since. And whereas, the Domestic Violence Month is held throughout the month of October as a national effort dedicated to raise awareness about domestic violence and the signs of abuse. And whereas, every October victim, advocates, professionals in the field, survivors and their loved ones, including communities, come together to reject domestic violence and to celebrate the progress that has been made to stop the epidemic in our communities. And whereas, this is the time to uplift the survivor voices, their needs and experiences, and provide additional resources to continue to combat this public health issue. And whereas, by acknowledging the reality of domestic violence, we as a community can work towards ending domestic violence and creating a safe and healthy community for all people. And whereas, the Health and Human Services Victim Service Unit responds to close to 500 domestic-related calls per year. Now, therefore, I do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Evanston to raise awareness and forge a community-wide partnership to end domestic violence. And if you could ask Director Ogbo and his team to come forward and receive this and simply want to thank you guys for all the important work that you do in this area. And next, we have YMCA Day in Evanston. And my understanding is there are representatives of the YMCA, the McGaw YMCA, oh, hello, to receive this as well. And so, whereas, the YMCA has served communities worldwide since 1844, reaching more than 65 million people annually in 120 countries and in more than 10,000 neighborhoods across the United States. And whereas, the Evanston YMCA, known today as the McGaw YMCA, was founded on November 17th, 1885, with its first home in Jennings Hall in the Rink Building at Davis Street and Chicago Avenue, later moving to 1576 Sherman Avenue, then 1611 Orington in 1898, and finally to its current site at 1,000 Grove Street in 1930. And whereas, the Evanston YMCA established several neighborhood branches reflecting and reinforcing the racial segregation of the era, including the North End Branch, later the Central Branch, the Emerson Street Branch, and the Grove Street Branch. And whereas, established in 1914, the Emerson Street Branch YMCA flourished for more than six decades as a cherished center of community culture and connection for Black Evanstonians until 1967, when the YMCA of the USA ended its practice of maintaining segregated branches. And whereas, the Evanston YMCA founded Camp Echo in 1924 in Fremont, Michigan, creating a cherished overnight camp tradition that continues to serve generations of Evanstonians. And whereas, for more than a century, the YMCA in Evanston has provided affordable housing for men from its Orington Avenue and Emerson Street locations to its current Grove Street facility, where it serves more than 175 men annually. And whereas, in 1984, the Grove Street Branch, by then the last remaining YMCA location in Evanston, was renamed the McGaw YMCA, emerging as the city's central hub for programs and services that support health growth and the well-being of the entire community. And whereas, in 1987, the McGaw YMCA Children's Center opened to provide early learning and after-school programs, becoming one of Cook County's largest licensed childcare providers. And whereas, for 140 years, the YMCA has remained a steadfast presence in Evanston, evolving to meet changing needs while continuing to serve as the city's central hub for wellness and connection. Now, therefore, I do hereby proclaim November 17th, 2025, as YMCA Day in Evanston in recognition of the YMCA's rich legacy and in celebration of its enduring mission to foster belonging, growth, and community well-being for all. And Monique, thank you, and your perhaps others from your team right here to receive this. If we could all give them a giant round of applause as I go to present them with the proclamation. This concludes my announcements and proclamations. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and Clerk Mendoza. First up, I wanted to share that staff is closely monitoring developments related to the federal government shutdown, specifically as it pertains to the SNAP program and its possible impact on our residents. We are communicating with District 65, District 202, and local nonprofits on this issue, and we will have more information to share later on this week. Next, I'd like to welcome Chief Stewart and the many EPD employees who are here tonight. Chief recently celebrated her three-year anniversary with the city of Evanston. Chief's here to... Chief is here tonight to present the annual state of the EPD. The floor is yours, Chief.
I might not have a mic. All right, there I go. Mic check, mic check, one, two. All right, sorry about that. Honorable Mayor Biss, distinguished members of City Council, Clerk Mendoza, Corporation Council Rugby, and City Manager Stowe, good evening. I'm honored to stand before you once again to deliver the annual state of the EPD. Tonight, I will focus on highlighting our service call volume, recruitment and retention efforts, technology updates, successes of the past year, and our path for 2026. Statistics discussed this evening will reflect from October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2025, for total service calls. Type A crime offenses are reported from October 2024 through June 2025, which aligns with our changeover to the new records management system by Tyler Technologies. Excluding off of the self-initiated activities, there were 27,207 calls to the Evanston Police Department between October 1st, 2024 and September 30th, 2025. Calls for service increased approximately 9% compared to the same timeframe last year. In alignment with the mayor's efforts to de-emphasize primary stops for non-safety-related violations, the majority of stops are now focused on speeding, occupant protection, and distracted driving. For EPD, it's a quality of stops over the quantity, emphasizing education alongside enforcement. The Traffic Bureau is now staffed with five officers and a sergeant. Traffic safety remains and will continue to be a priority. The National Incident-Based Reporting System of Niagara tracks type A offenses under crimes against people, property, and society. Tonight's stats cover an eight-and-a-half-month period from October 1st, 2024 through June 17th, 2025, compared to the same span last year. This timeframe was used due to our transition to Tyler Technologies as the state of Illinois is still uploading recent data. Overall, type A offenses were down approximately 15%, with a significant decrease in property crimes, which were down 18%. For a community this size of Evanston, boarding the nation's third most populous city, to go two and a half years without a homicide is a true blessing. Increased staffing along with intelligence-led and evidence-based efforts has proven highly effective. I'm extremely proud of every one of our members. In January, we sent nine officers to the Training Academy, all of whom have successfully completed field training. Additionally, we hired four lateral police officers, three of whom are currently in field training. Each month, we carefully review lateral applications to identify the most qualified candidates to serve our community. Currently, we have nine lateral applicants going through the hiring process. We celebrated several well-deserved promotions over the past year. Commander Dukeley and Sergeant Leeson were just the beginning, followed by Sergeants Camera, Daley, and Wright, among nine sergeants promoted since April 2024. During the past 12 months, we celebrated the careers and retirements of Sergeant Joe Bush, Sergeant Michael Andre, Officer Willie Hunt, Officer Ted Sheenby, Telecommunications Aline Allen, and telecommunicator Mike Stonequest. We also dedicated a memorial bench to Service Desk Officer Tanya Owens at the front of the Evanston Police Department. Tanya's family joined us as dozens of department members gathered to honor her memory, a powerful reminder of how deeply she touched this organization and this community. There were several major technology updates over the past year. Our CAD and RMS system transitioned to Tyler Tech, a significant undertaking led by Communications Manager Chris Voss, with support from Deputy Chief Jody Wright and Review Officer Catalina De La Rosa. The implementation required collaboration across the entire department as everyone adapted to a new way of operating. In addition, DIAXON Standard's internal documentation module is now fully operational, thanks to the dedicated efforts of Commander Korea and the previous efforts of Commander Glue. Safety at public events is one of the minds of nearly everyone I speak with. I repositioned the commander to focus solely on special events, safety, and related efforts. We will continue to collaborate with internal and external stakeholders to remain vigilant in this area. The past year has been filled with success and growth. Sorting through everything we've accomplished to choose what to share this evening wasn't easy. July 4th once again was celebrated in a safe manner along Central Street and along our lakefront. Every year, we ensure community safety by having every member who is not on scheduled vacation work. Our Community Police Academy has celebrated two more graduations this past year, as our all-time alumni grew to well over 1,000 graduates. Community building is what we know. We take advantage of every opportunity. You can always find us around town mixing it up with some old and new friends, using social media to create greater engagement. Engaging with Evanston's youth puts a smile on everyone's face at the police department. Station tours and chess matches are just a couple of the things we did over the past year to meet the kids and show that we are helpers. We also participated in Camp Kumba with Stuart Nation taking home the trophy. One more time for that, with Stuart Nation taking home the trophy. A small group of dedicated employees spent much of their unobligated time in 2025 on department accreditation efforts. The work product put forth by Commander Glenn and Sergeant Keeler was beyond impressive. We look forward to sharing our successful effort with the community at large once we receive our final report for accreditation. Nearly 100% of Evanston sworn officers are Crisis Intervention Team-trained. This is also known as CIT, a 40-hour curriculum where officers learn about mental health and addiction disorders, participate in live role-playing scenarios. EPD proudly accepted the 2025 Illinois CIT Department of the Year Award in East Peoria at the State CIT Conference this year. In a joint effort with the FBI, EPD arrested an individual selling firearms in Evanston, recovering five guns, and securing felony gun-running charges. An narcotics investigation near Maine and Maple identified a known offender tied to a Chicago homicide, resulting in a safe arrest and charges for both murder and drug delivery. Additionally, a year-long multi-agency investigation in Albany Care involving the FBI, IRS, CPD, and EPD led to six indictments for drug trafficking and firearm offenses. A year-round pattern identifying identity theft in the downtown area was uncovered, leading to the arrest of a suspect charged with multiple felonies and found to have three outstanding warrants. Juvenile detectives investigated a case in which a juvenile was lowered into a vehicle, resulting in multiple felony charges. In the 300 block of Custer, a suspect was identified and arrested for setting an unoccupied car on fire. Following a late-night CTA yellow line assault, officers quickly used video and forensic evidence to identify and arrest the suspect, charging him with aggravated criminal sexual assault and aggravated battery. We are proud of our accomplishments over the past 12 months. The EPD has been working tirelessly on behalf of the Evanston community. 2026 will be another big year for EPD. In a rapidly changing world, our ability to adapt quickly is more vital than ever. We'll continue to train and deploy our special and rapid response teams for community emergencies. Supervisory training will further expand, and a new canine handler will be selected as assets upcoming retirement. We will continue to partner with the Evanston Fire Department on Marine 21 to ensure lakeshore safety, and will train on rapid deployment and pre-planned major city events using the incident command system. The men and women of the Evanston Police Department will continue to serve day in and day out, night in and night out, with honor and integrity. None of this will be possible without the dedication and commitment of every sworn and civilian member of EPD. Our reputation reflects our values and draws officers from other agencies, proof that our people and this community are our greatest ambassadors. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Chief? I do have two quick things. We have a large number of employees from the Evanston Police Department here tonight. I wonder if we could give them a round of applause? And Chief, you did leave one thing out of your presentation for 2025, a really important thing. As many of you in this room know, Chief Stewart was named the 2025 Illinois Police Chief of the Year.
I will add, it wouldn't be possible without the members you see in the back of this room. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, and thank you for your service, all of you in the Evanston Police Department. May I ask just a question to dovetail on your Daniels comments about ICE? Just because, and thank you, Commander Glue answered most of my questions, but I know many in the public had questions also about the situation when we have these abduction seizures, in terms of keeping records and having a presence to ask for ID. If you could just walk us through, I think the public would like to know, you know, should they call 911? Will 911 show up? And what warrants can be asked for? What IDs and what records would be kept on this situation? Which has terrified so many in our community and has people frightened, and I think they want to make it, you know, very clear in Evanston that this is not normal behavior that we're going to stand by and watch.
Before Commander Glue gets started, I just want to say thank you for posing that question to educate this community.
Absolutely.
Okay, we had a conversation earlier today, and I know the city has sent out some additional information. So kind of what I'm going to talk about today kind of mirrors that. I want to start off by saying not every situation is exactly the same, but I think that the guidance that we're going to put out there is going to cover, going to give us a good starting point, cover 90% of what we're going to deal with, and get us within a good spot to resolve what's left. So as we know, generally speaking, ICE is not communicating with the local agencies before they come to town. We have had sporadic conversation or notification, but generally speaking, we're learning about ICE when we get a call from a citizen, or we hear something on social media, or intel team picks up on it. But when we learn of an ICE incident, we have been responding to assess. Going forward, we've made it a little bit more formal that a supervisor will have to respond to these incidents, like we have, and it will be a supervisor. And once they get there, they will do an initial assessment or basic investigation. They will talk to witnesses, they will review any video, and they will do a case report. Any video that needs to be sent in from citizens can be attached to a case report. We have ways of getting that information into our evidence.com system. And then that investigation will be reviewed by the chief of police for possible referral to the AG's office. Now, we'll talk a little bit about what can we ask, what credentials can we ask for, so on and so forth. These are dynamic arrest situations. So when we arrive, we are going to try to make an attempt to meet with, if they are there, which they have not, anytime we've gotten a call, ICE has been gone by the time we got there. And but even if they're gone, we will do a preliminary assessment investigation. But if they are there, we will make every attempt to meet with the special agent in charge so we at least identify what team it is. We won't be able to identify all the agents involved and all that information, but at least if we can get enough information that we can tie, if we have to put through a complaint that's going to tie it to that team. With regards to whether it's a civil process or criminal warrant that they're serving, at that time, the initial assessment, we probably will not be able to get that right away. I do want to talk about, we have not had the situation yet where our officers and ICE have been present and arrested at the same time. I will share with everybody here what I shared with Councilmember Kelly earlier, and that is if we have an overarching goal to keep members of the community out of federal custody, which has kind of been our guiding, I would say, principle through this, when officers show up, we can't do much, we can't facilitate ICE or assist their operations, but we can't thwart them either. What we will do is we will do our level best to keep our citizens who are there to respond to voice their discontent, to keep them in an area where they are not going to cross potential line that's going to land them in the crosshairs of ICE and in federal custody. So with regards to, that is our overarching goal of our city's approach is that, and when we arrive, that is also going to be one of our goals, is not just to investigate and assess, but to keep our citizens from, I would say, we'll try to maintain boundaries that keep them from having problems with the federal authorities.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I guess also, so to confirm, confirming affiliation, that, how does that work? Like in terms of, like what can be requested? I'm just...
I think that we can attempt as much as we can if there's somebody there. Now, I mean, you know, early on, I think we have a high degree of confidence that when these operations come to us, we see video, we can make a judgment if it's ICE or not. If it isn't, if it's something illegal, other outside of federal operations, if it was actually a traditional criminal activity, people that were, you know, non-law enforcement actors, we would probably get that reported by the victim's family. But we will do our best to identify who's involved, and like I said, if something appears to be misconduct, then we will refer that to the Attorney General's Office to start.
Thank you. So we, but you all would have the right to get some sort of identification?
We can, we can make the attempt, but we are talking about federal law enforcement. So if they basically, if they did not want, I mean, I think that we would have good luck with them cooperating, but a lot, you know, if, you know, there's always be an attempt that we could show up, and if it's a hostile enough situation, holding them up there may not be the best thing. Maybe we can rendezvous a little bit out of the way, but we will make every attempt, but I can't say, we don't have the legal authority to force federal, to force the federal law enforcement agencies to give us credentials.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that, and I understand the limitations with regard to that. I guess it's just to verify both affiliation and that excessive force isn't being used if possible. Obviously, camouflage and police sign isn't a form of ID, right? So, thank you.
And just so you know, the mayor, city manager, myself, deputy city manager, and Liza, we're all constantly working on this. This isn't just, okay, we're satisfied with where we're at now. This is a day-to-day thing where we're meeting, and Alex Rugby, and going through how we can keep this community safe. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier this afternoon, or earlier today, it was shared with city council documentation on the staff protocol and procedures should ICE or federal agents attempt to enter a city facility. That document included examples or samples of a judicial warrant, which would allow ICE to enter a facility, and another example of an administrative warrant, which would not allow ICE to enter a facility. I could imagine, in the heat of the moment, if an ICE agent was out in the community and held up the administrative warrant, which doesn't allow them to get into a facility, that folks might not know the difference. So I guess this is a request of city staff to make these two examples publicly available so we can further educate the community as to what would allow an ICE agent illegal, legal and appropriate entry versus a document that looks almost the same. If you don't know what you're looking for, would maybe allow them to get in when they shouldn't be.
We have no problem working with the city team on that. I work with the deputy city manager.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just echo my thanks. This is a really, really tough situation, and I appreciate the step that you've taken. I think it's very bold and commendable and important. I think the impossible situation... I think the impossible situation that you guys are in is that if you are able to arrive as one of these abductions is occurring, as Councilmember Kelly says, camo and a badge that says ICE is not only not identification, it's something that you could just go by as a civilian. And so among the many things that I think residents are frightened about is how do we even know that the individuals engaging in this activity are from ICE at all? Whether or not we agree with it, whether or not they're even appropriately using their federal authority? How do we know they're federal law enforcement agents if it's the case that you show up, ask for identification, and they're just like, hey, man, thanks, but no thanks, goodbye?
Yeah, I think it's going to be based on a totality of circumstances. And, you know, if we go there and we get some cooperation where people do want to, hey, you guys are here, let's go around the corner, we're able to identify ourselves, we're able to give you some information, we're going to have a higher degree of confidence that that is going to be an ICE operation. If we do really kind of get that, even if we think of based on what we observe, it's likely ICE, but they are not cooperative, I mean, we're going to be there with body warm cameras, we're going to be capturing, especially if we're there, we're going to be capturing who's there, even if they're masked, we're capturing the vehicles, the license plates, and so on and so forth. And that might be a situation where we look at the initial investigation, we go, you know what, this needs to be something that the attorney general needs to look at. You know, we want to be, I don't think we, I don't think we necessarily want to send everything there, but at the point that if we have questions in our mind about, well, is this appropriate, then that's what it's there for.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commander Glue. Thank you, Chief Stewart. Next up, shifting gears, we are providing a presentation tonight as a preliminary look at the zero-based budgeting initiative in the Public Works Department. Jonathan Ingram of Raftellus is here to provide a preview of the work they've done so far, and a final report will be available by the end of this year. And I believe Jonathan is going to share his screen now.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jonathan Ingram of Raftellus. Appreciate the introduction. Bear with me as I, as I deal with the electronics here. Folks, see the screen okay?
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you again for the, for the time to spend a little, to speak with you this evening. Sorry.
Sorry, hold on, I think I, I think I spoke out of turn.
Okay.
We now have some sort of infinite recursive.
Yeah, I see.
MCHRian thing happening.
Yeah. Bear with me here.
Jonathan, if you want to try again to share your screen.
Yeah, I'm working on it here. Okay. How about now?
Yep.
Okay, good. All right. So just high level today, I realize you all have a very, a very tight agenda, but we wanted to give you all a good, strong update, just in terms of how the project has unfolded and what's been accomplished to date. We'll just give you just a quick primer just on zero-based budgeting, just to reorient you a little bit in terms of the specifics of the, of the assessment, and talk through what our approach has been up to this point and highlight some of the key next steps. We won't be sharing any, any kind of high, high-level conclusions at this point, but just want to give you all a good opportunity to, to understand how the processes unfold. We've completed quite a bit of work up to this point. So in terms of the project overview, I think most of you have had a, had a good opportunity to, you know, develop an understanding of, of what we have been tasked with at Raftellus. The first really thing that we were tasked with is to look at the viability of using a zero-based budget as a tool for adjusting some of the city's financial challenges, recognizing you all have some, some budget challenges that you're, that you're attempting to work through. We are looking very specifically at each of your programs within Public Works, the level of services that are offered in those programs in particular, policies, procedures, structures, those kinds of things. To be able to ultimately frame a series of decision packages for your administration to consider and for you all as a governing body to decision, to, to, to use, to inform potential adjustments that you would want to consider in trying to right the ship just with respect to some of the budget challenges that you have. We're also identifying some opportunities to, you know, improve organizational structure, staffing, technology, processes, those things that may have a fundamental influence on generating efficiency and, and helping you all as an organization, you know, better align your resources with service level expectations and resource constraints within, within the community. So high level in terms of the timeline, there's really a few key activities. The first, you know, project kickoff, obviously that's complete. Spent a lot of time over the past couple of months engaging with the team, but we have largely completed our initial assessment of operations, which is really the bulk of our effort here in September and October. We've interviewed staff and stakeholders, developed our core services inventory, and started to develop opportunities to move toward reviewing those, those observations and recommendations with you all. Our next steps in the process, and I'll, I'll highlight this a little bit later in some more detail, is related to dive into developing decision packages for you all to consider. But we are, you know, really right in the assess operations phase of the process with the goal to wrap up in December, January, to be back in front of you all with, with more details in terms of the, the conclusions that we've reached and the decision support information that you all will need. In terms of the specific activities that we've completed, we've conducted about 30 interviews with 40 individuals within Public Works Agency, within the union shop, union representatives, members of city management, the finance and budget department, obviously critical to any budget effort, as well as we had opportunity to interview some council members, we took advantage of that opportunity as well. We've been really working quite diligently on analyzing the city's data. You know, our focus is really to, to make sure that we understand how your programs are structured, how they're funded, which resources from a staffing perspective and from a contract perspective are allocated to those programs, and to align and complete best practice research to be able to inform some of the decision packages that we, that we would develop. We have developed our initial, you know, program-based service budget, so we have really broken down, you're, done our initial work to break down your programs or your, your budget information at a program level. And our, to, I'd say we're about 75% to the, to the point of presenting you all with decision packages. So again, you all requested a very tight timeline, and we've been working really diligently to, to move through, so you all have good process here at the beginning of the year. So just to, just to reorient folks, just in terms of zero-based budgeting principles and, and what that means, really, it's, it's a, it's a framework developed by the governance, the Government Finance Officers Association that seeks to build a budget entirely from the ground up. So as you all know, one of the things that happens during the budget process is you, you tend to start with last year's budget and figure out what adjustments you need to make to account for inflation, to account for contractual obligations, that your collective bargaining agreements, those kinds of things, and, and then to make adjustments from that prior year budget. What the GFOA, you know, recommends on the zero-based budgeting principle is to justify programs and services instead of looking at incremental changes from past years, to really think of it as, all right, which services do we want to be in? What's our service levels? What service levels are we trying to achieve? And what's the best way to really deliver those services based on the current environment that you all are facing? And this allows you to, you know, obviously honor how the organization has evolved to become, you know, what it is in Public Works, but to think differently and to, and to, to some degree, look past the historical practice that has led you to your current operating environment. So what we really focus on doing in, in zero-based budgeting is to divide the organization into decision units. So in other words, we're not necessarily looking at divisions like operations, we're looking at individual programs, like tree trimming or, or sidewalk maintenance, those kinds of things. So really getting at that level to help, and that helps really translate to thinking about service levels, not just budget units. So our approach specifically has been really to develop, again, those individual programs. We've gone through a process of going through your 2025 adopted budget, as well as the budget that you are sort of working toward now, to, to start to allocate your existing resources at the program level. So part of the effort has been to sort of reconstruct your budget and to, and to assign resources, where, where they make, where they make sense in terms of how individuals within the department are assigned, okay? We've also spent some, spent some energy to complete, you know, a comparative, you know, organizational and operational assessment to identify what are those opportunities to potentially enhance operational effectiveness? So, you know, this involves looking at best practices, but really, you know, at a fundamental level, what it involves is looking at, you know, what you all are tasked with, what your service level expectations are, what your workload is within the community, and determining if there are potential different ways to think about how the, how the organization is structured to enhance some of the operational effectiveness. And then, and then our ultimate goal is to develop those zero-based budget decision packages for you, which we are on track to do based on the expedited timeframe that we've provided to you all. So just in terms of the framework and how we're thinking about things, there's really three, you know, core areas. We are looking at every single program that you deliver in Public Works, both in terms of your general fund as well as your restricted fund. And we're categorizing the current service delivery approach in, in one of three categories. The first is, you know, base or core. And this is really your bare minimum of service level that is necessary to provide the required services to comply with city's legal, regulatory, and fiduciary responsibilities. So in other words, this is, I would say, the, the, the minimum level of service that you all can provide and meet those, those core requirements. And we are looking at target. So based on, you know, current resources and past practice, what you all as a community have come to expect, you know, is the program achieving, you know, your desired service levels for the city? So this is really reflecting what you're all's past practice and what your primary, you know, focus is. And then we're categorizing services that you're providing as potentially value-added or best practice. In other words, based on, you know, the American Public Works Association, American Waterworks Association, based on peer assessments that we have completed in other organizations, is the approach that you all are trying to provide in the service level that you are trying to provide in the community, value-added or best practice? And the reason we are framing things this way and really focusing at this level is because it gives you a clear decision matrix. So, you know, there may be areas where you are performing, you know, your target service level, and you all can have as a council, as a council, an informed decision about whether the current service level you're providing is appropriate, or whether it's potentially okay to reduce that service level to a base or core service level in order to generate savings and solve some of the financial challenges. You all may also decide as a governing body that we want to adjust some target service levels to move toward a value-added or best practice framework. So it's really important to think when in zero-based, in a zero-based budgeting, around service levels first, okay? So as we sort of reframe what the budgets look like and present decision package, packages to you, they'll really be framed around the service level decisions that are most important to you all as a council to make. And we will try to work and articulate what are the potential financial implications and full-time equivalent employee sort of allocation impacts that will be important for you all to consider. So that's the framework in terms of how we're categorizing your programs. As I've mentioned, you know, we've completed, you know, the initial categorization of your, of your Public Works, you know, programs and associate activities. We have also estimated resources and funding sources for each of those programs, and we have developed an initial assessment of each of the program's service levels, whether it's core, target, or best practice. So, you know, we fully completed that best practice research and have those individually categorized. And we have also identified what we believe, based on our review of the operation, the key decision points that will be important to you all in the decision packages. We are working to, to sort of vet and, and vet that program resource allocation for accuracy and engaging with staff on that. So that's, you know, when we're talking about the things that we are still working on or still to be completed, we're really in that vetting phase to make sure that what we ultimately present to you is reliable and, and fully vetted internally with your staff, and finalizing what the potential service level and fiscal impact will be associated with some of the decision packages that we'll present. So, you know, as we move forward, we will review and vet those packages with the project team, again, using your, the expertise on your staff to make sure we're correctly interpreting, you know, the sometimes muddy information that can, that can exist within, within budget documents, getting as clear as we, as we possibly can. And ultimately coming back to you all with, with findings and a, and a final report, project report, in relatively short order. So high level, again, just a, a quick update on where we are in terms of the process. Again, I think we've made really good process so far, progress so far. We'll be in a really good position to present solid findings to you in the near future. And, you know, again, our immediate next steps are just to work toward delivering that draft report and, and working with staff at the end of the year to be able to vet those decision packages. And with that, I'll stop sharing and open up the, open it up to any questions you all may have.
Thank you, Jonathan, for that presentation. Any questions for Jonathan? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Councilor Newsma.
I'll just jump in. Thank you, Councilmember Jonathan Newsma here. So how you doing, Jonathan, other Jonathan?
I'm well. How are you?
Good. I appreciate your team's work on this. And, you know, there's more information in the packet that city council members have in front of us this evening than you've shared in your presentation tonight, just in the interest of time. So my quick review here, looks like we're pretty good. Is there anything that kind of stands out from your third-party review of Evanston's Public Works Department that's particularly good, bad? Are we, are we about average, or does it really kind of depend?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to sort of speak at that level, and you're correct. I think you all have a packed agenda, so we've truncated the, the presentation a bit. But, you know, you know, I will say, there are a lot of consistencies in the way you all, or there's a lot of consistencies in terms of the challenges that your department is facing, that you all as a community are facing relative to infrastructure management. Very similar to what we see in lots of other areas around the country. There is nothing in the department where I'm just like, wow, they're really doing a, a bad job, or, but there are areas where you all are struggling to deliver service. There are areas where you're delivering outstanding service, right? And I think there's a natural sort of challenge and pressure of, right, what level of service is good enough? And do we really want to provide best practice service? Or do we want to maybe provide something that is a little bit more manageable, a little bit more financially feasible, right? So I think, you know, that's really the nature of what the conversations will, will lend themselves to. You all have a number of programs, I think, that are, that are really exceptional. You all know, in your community, you have an exceptional snow removal program, for example. You know, other programs and areas need some help. You know, I think, you know, the way in which you all allocate resources on the, on the alley management side, your infrastructure management with respect to your alleys, I would say is, is a, is an example of it's a core or base level of service, right? So, you know, I think part of our, part of our effort will be, I'm really to just emphasize, you know, that you all, your department of staff with really strong folks, people with tremendous amounts of experience, you're doing some things that a lot of other communities are not effectively doing. You know, you're, the, the process, for example, that you, or the, the way in which you all are both designing and managing your capital projects and the capacity you have internally to do that kind of work is really, really great and exceptional. But you're, again, you're facing many of the same challenges that, you know, a lot of other departments are facing. But, you know, I think, I think they're manageable. We have to get to a place where you all, as a governing body, are making, you know, informed decisions about potential budget adjustments within the lens of what the impact in the community will be and what the true fiscal savings will be associated with, you know, adjustments in service level.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jonathan.
Thank you for that. Will the clerk please add Councilmember Burns to the roll? This concludes the city manager's public announcements. Next on the agenda is communications from the city clerk.
I have no communications. I, we forwarded emails from my office earlier today for public comment.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is our public hearing. Pursuant to the Illinois compiled statutes in section 1-11-5 of the city code, the Evanston City Council is considering a public hearing today to consider the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget document. The purpose of this hearing is to allow for public input on the proposed budget document. There will be no final action on the budget today. Staff has presented an overview of the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget on October 13th, 2025. And this presentation, along with the proposed budget itself, is available at cityofevanston.org/government/budget. I hereby convene the hearing for the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget. So we have one person who signed up on paper to participate in the budget hearing. So Lenny Lampkin will go with three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I live in the Ninth Ward. I'm a longtime resident of the city of Evanston. I own a condo here in the city of Evanston. My concern with the city budget is the proposal to increase the tax levy on homeowners and condo owners. I think it's appropriate that the city council take a look at all the tiffs that are happening in the city and maybe eliminate some of them as a way to bring down and get those taxes back on the city pay, city budget, so that we can lower that tax levy. The second thing I would suggest is that the city, which, and particularly the city councils who voted for the Northwestern memorandum of understanding, go back to Northwestern and ask that they front-load that money. Let's not. Let's not wait until the stadium is built. Let's get that money now to help offset some of this tax levy. Those are two sources of dollars for the city. Real estate developers don't need those property taxes. The malls don't need those property taxes and sales taxes. We, the residents, we, the property owners, need that money. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And then one person signed up online. It's not fully clear if this is to participate in the public hearing, so I'll call on this person. And Yes, Prestalter, were you asking to participate in the public hearing or the regular public Looks like the regular public comment. Hearing nothing further. I hereby adjourn this hearing. And of course, to state the obvious, there will be lots further discussion of the city council and the public and the full community about the budget proposal in the coming weeks. We now move to the regular public comment period. There are right around, sorry, there are right around 30 people signed up for public comment, so everyone will be given a minute and a half for their comment. We begin, as always, with those who signed up in person to speak in person. Sorry. We begin, as always, with those who signed up in person to speak in person, beginning with Roger Williams, who will be followed by Frank Hill, and then Andy Vick. Sorry, before we get started, Councilmember Kelly.
So this might not be very popular up here, but would you consider allowing two minutes? I just feel like a minute and a half is so exceedingly short.
As always, very happy to follow the will of the majority on this one. If you want to make a motion, we can see a vote.
I'd like to move to allow, if folks want to speak for up to two minutes, two minutes time.
I'll second.
Councilmember Kelly moves to allow two minutes per speaker for public comment this evening. Councilmember Rogers seconds. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Isles?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsma? Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden? Was that an aye or?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and every speaker will be given two minutes this evening. Mr. Williams.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Roger Williams. I'm a real estate broker here and a president of rezoning for a better Evanston. According to recent data, the cost of renting an apartment in Evanston is astronomical. A one-bedroom apartment averages $1,884 per month. A two-bedroom apartment costs roughly $2,518 per month. These aren't just high figures. They are barriers that exclude people from living here. Let's look at what it truly means for an individual. The general guideline states that no one should pay more than 30% of their income on rent. To afford a basic one-bedroom apartment here, a renter must earn over $6,280 per month or more than $75,000 per year. For many, that figure is completely out of reach. It means that nurses, teachers, service workers, and local employers who keep Evanston running cannot afford to live in the city that they serve. It means we are failing to be the inclusive community we claim to be. The 605 Davis Project is our chance to directly confront this crisis. It is not an abstract proposal. It's a concrete, necessary step forward. I support 605 Davis because it guarantees 84 genuinely affordable rental units. Supporting this project means supporting economic diversity, community stability, and a future where Evanston is affordable for everyone. We can approve this project and been fixing our housing shortage today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Frank Hill. He'll be followed by Andy Vick, and then Lenny Lampkin.
Good evening. Frank Hill, Board Vice President, rezoning for a better Evanston, Seventh Ward detached single-family homeowner. I'm here offering comment regarding the vote on the proposed development of 605 Davis Street. It will come as no surprise to anyone familiar with affordable housing discussions in Evanston that I am in support of the development of 605 Davis Street. One of the lots involved has remained vacant for 55 years. The other has been a defunct ATM drive-thru for the last few years. The time has come to build on these sites. A vote against this development betrays an underlying antagonism toward affordable housing, period. The arguments against this development, based on tax incentives for developing affordable housing and comparing this development to a fantasy building that will never be built, are fatuous at best and disingenuous at worst. No developer, including Vermillion, is building that fantasy building. This has gone on long enough. Vote yes. Vote for 84 affordable units of housing downtown for 84 living, breathing households in downtown Evanston. Just vote yes, folks.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Andy Vick, who will be followed by Lenny Lampkin, and then Paula
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, City Manager Stowe, City Clerk Mendoza. My name is Andy Vick. I'm the Executive Director of Downtown Evanston, which is also known as Special Service Area Number Nine, and I am here today to speak in favor of 605 Davis. The Downtown Evanston Organization is in favor of more density and development within the city of Evanston's Downtown Business District, and we are strongly in support of the project at 605 Davis Street. It's our understanding that the developer has made several modifications to their initial proposal in response to city council requests. Now that those design concessions have been incorporated into a revised proposal, we're hopeful that the city council will vote to approve the project and enable the construction to move forward as expeditiously as possible. As we have articulated before, we believe that more residential development within the central commercial district is necessary to support existing local businesses, create more street-level vitality, and generate the additional tax revenue that will support the future growth and sustainability of our city. Thank you in advance for your support of this important project.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Lenny Lampkin, who will be followed by Paula Scholl, and then Mike Masaleo.
Good evening again. Going to speak on two issues. First one I came to speak on is union yes. We have four, we had four Starbucks stores in Evanston. Starbucks owner Brian Nichols closed the one on Main Street because it was 94% union. We have two more union stores, one on Sherman and one at Dodge and Dempster. They are going on strike on Red Cup Day. I urge this city council and the members of the city of Evanston to honor those picket lines and not cross them, and to city council to write a letter to Brian Nichols telling him to negotiate. He makes $900 million a year. Baristas can't afford to live in the city of Evanston. This has to end. Secondly, in terms of AFSMI, let's not break up the AFSMI Local. The Public Works presentation you just had didn't even mention that the reason we have good public facilities is the members of AFSMI, not the city council, not the staff of the city, but the workers who go out there in freezing weather and plow our streets and who, when cars have gotten stuck, have stopped that plow and pushed those people out of the snow so they can get on their way. If it wasn't for AFSMI, our city wouldn't run, and if it wasn't for the teachers' unions, our schools wouldn't run. The last thing I want to talk about is ICE. We can do more. I appreciate the email that came out from the city today, but a previous city council meeting, you guys talked about banning them from city properties. In order to really ban them, you need signage. Let's put the signage up at the entrance, every entranceway into the city that said immigrants are welcome here, ICE is not, and list the ordinance that says they can't enter onto our city properties and seize people. And let's make our schools and our parks sanctuary places for ICE, and we can protect them by putting offices there so that when ICE shows up, they can say you can't enter this building. They will know the difference between an administrative and a real warrant.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Paula Scholl, who will be followed by Mike Masaleo, and then William Carter.
Hello, Paula Scholl, Environment Board Co-Chair, speaking on behalf of the Environment Board. We also emailed a resolution to all of you earlier today. Last Thursday, the Environment Board reviewed the draft 2026 Sustainability Budget, and we noticed that it appears to have been disproportionately reduced compared to other city budgets. $100,000 in wheel tax revenue previously earmarked for sustainability was reallocated to the general fund, and other CARP-related expenses formerly shared with other city departments, especially Sustain Evanston, were transferred to the Sustainability Budget without corresponding revenue. Because the 2022 wheel tax increase was designed to support the reduction of the city's carbon emissions, and because the disproportionate reductions to the Sustainability Budget will hinder our ability to further implement programs such as Sustain Evanston and the Green Homes pilot expansion, the Environment Board finds the transfer of the $100,000 in wheel tax revenue to the general fund to be inadvisable, and we recommend that those funds be restored to sustainability. We also urge that other funding for sustainability be restored more proportionally with other city budget allocations and commensurate with the assumption of additional responsibilities by the Sustainability Department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mike Masaleo, who will be followed by William Carter, and then Tricia Connolly.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for your time. My name is Mike Masaleo. I'm the President of the Chicago and Cook County Building and Construction Trades Council. We serve over 80,000 tradesmen and women throughout Cook County and their families. I'm here to speak on support of the 605 Davis Project. I can assure you that one thing, that Walsh Construction, as a general contractor, has been a partner of the building trades in Chicagoland for several decades, and when Walsh puts their name on a project, the community receives the highest-quality project in the industry. So I just come here to humbly ask for your support and look forward to working with you guys in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is William Carter, who will be followed by Tricia Connolly, and then Francis Rhodes.
Good evening, councilmembers and residents of Evanston. My comment, I have a couple. First, this new building going up, let's call a spade a spade. Studios and one-bedrooms are not going to support families. What it will support are more students from the university. Call a spade a spade. Call it what it is. You're building housing for the university that the city of Evanston is going to have to pay for because of the taxes, the breaks that they're getting. That's one. Number two, I was accused of taking potshots at the city council when I mentioned Wesley, that the city gave this to the Wesley tenants, and they gave that to the Wesley. They didn't give us anything. We fought hard for it. You offer us a weekend housing, we fought, and we got housing until we found apartments. You were going to hold our belongings for six months. We fought until you said that you will hold our belongings until we found a new place. Everything we got for, we fought for. You did not give the Wesley tenants anything, and now those things that we fought for are running out, and these tenants have no idea what they're doing or where they're going to go. The fear they had day one, they now have again because the city of Evanston has failed that community. I watched a group Sunday, Unity, taking care of the family, where we raise our family, and the city of Evanston is supporting us. Where was that support when Wesley asked for it, when Wesley begged for it? This city council has to do better for its tenants.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tricia Connolly, who will be followed by Francis Rhodes, and then Brigitte Petritas.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. I'm here tonight as a retired District 65 school librarian, one of 15 librarian colleagues that collaborated with librarians at the Evanston Public Library on behalf of the school community. I am a retired union member of the Illinois Educators Association, and I stand in solidarity with the librarians and workers at the Evanston Public Library. What I'm seeing and hearing is sounding familiar, like a page from a book of the city of Evanston, lack of collaboration with employees and residents, and adding a third party into the mix, a consultant to lay out what is best for our community rather than a collaboration with professionals within the organization and community at large. This is tiresome. Collaboration is work. I believe it is the work that is so very important within institutions in order to benefit the greater good, for bringing more attention to whether it would really be beneficial to become a separate district in our community or not. I'm asking elected officials who say they support unions and workers to stand up and activate and show you do care. Listen to the library staff. Set this up as a collaborative project with the board and the staff and participate. Show greater community that the ideas, the views, and the concerns of the rank-and-file members matter and need to be addressed in any plan. Otherwise, we'll be looking at you and the library board as if this is just another potential backroom real estate transaction for a large parcel in our downtown to be given to the highest bidder. I'm here to stand in solidarity with the AFSMI librarians and staff at the city of Evanston. We expect our elected leaders to show EPL librarians and staff that they are an essential voice for the future of the Evanston Public Library. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Francis Rhodes, who will be followed by Brigitte Petritas, and then Heather Ross.
Good evening. My name is Francis Rhodes. I'm a library assistant at the Evanston Public Library, and I am speaking to you today as a concerned member of AFSMI Local 1891. As a library employee, I am disgusted by the repeated and blatant lies told by the library director and the administration to the staff and to the public. They claim that there is no intention for the library to separate, and yet they continue to take functional moves away from the city, violating our Memorandum of Understanding, violating our collective bargaining agreement, and violating the library's own bylaws. Some examples of this are the following. On September 25, the library posted a job opening for a human resources manager internal to the library and separate from the city's HR. At the subsequent labor management meeting on October 9, union representatives informed library leadership that this was in violation of their own bylaw, Section 1.91, Paragraph 4. What was their response? On October 15, at the board meeting, they removed the requirement that the public must be given 30 days' notice before changes to the bylaws are made. They completely removed the city oversight, and they gave themselves the power to change bylaws without notice. And on October 23, administration announced for the first time that, beginning November 1, they will no longer be using the city's HR platform for staff evaluations and rolling out a new platform. This removes the city from the entire process and once again violates our collective bargaining agreement. Library leadership's words do not match their actions. Their deceit is clear, and so is their union busting. And so I implore the members of the council to block the library and administration from taking more steps towards separation. Say no to the maximum tax levy increase, and say no to gifting the library its multimillion-dollar building. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Brigitte Petritas, who will be followed by Heather Ross, and then Jeff Garrett.
We're going to be reading a statement, and we're going to switch order.
So I'm Heather Ross. My name is Heather Ross, and I'm a resident of the First Ward, a librarian at the Evanston Public Library, and AFSMI Local 1891 union member. The following remarks are on behalf of both myself and Lorena Neal, the union steward for the Evanston Public Library, who was unable to attend this evening. I would like to address several concerns with the actions of the Evanston Public Library Board of Trustees and EPL leadership. On October 8, the union and library management met for a quarterly labor management meeting where the union expressed our concerns about continuing where the union expressed our concerns about continuing hostile workplace issues at the library, which the City of Evanston's Human Resources Department has been investigating and addressing. We also expressed our concern that library management's plan to hire a separate human resources manager for the library is not only an attempt to circumvent city HR's role in resolving these issues, but was also in violation of the library's own bylaws and our collective bargaining agreement. Less than a week later, the library board's response to the concerns we raised was not to try to resolve the underlying hostile workplace issues, but to make the very first item on its agenda changing its bylaws in an attempt to avoid the oversight of city HR. This piece of new business was listed not for discussion or public notice, but for immediate approval, which was a violation of the board's own bylaw about how to amend bylaws. An overly hasty action to rewrite the rules in an attempt to evade outside oversight of continuing issues for library employees is not consistent with the board's responsibilities or with the collective bargaining agreement that covers all city union employees and departments, including the library. Now the library has plans to implement a new performance evaluation system for employees separate from the city's system, which has many features of concern to library members. Local 1891 has communicated our concerns regarding these actions, the hostile library work environment, and ongoing union interference to the mayor, city manager, and city council members. We will continue to speak out until these manners are resolved.
Good evening. My name is Bridget Petritas. I'm an Evanston Public Library employee and member of AFSMI Local 1891. I'll be reading the second part of steward Lorena Neal's statement. In its last meeting, the board and library leadership eliminated a vacant safety monitor position. This reduction in our safety team is part of a concerning trend towards reduction in library services as a whole. Library services have been significantly reduced over the past two years, impacting Evanston residents, patrons, and our staff. These reductions include the reduction of community events by 33% according to the library fund performance measures chart in the 2026 proposed City of Evanston budget, the reduction of digital resources, including eBooks and e-audiobooks, the removal of physical media and bookshelves, the elimination of the safety monitor position despite numerous occasions when there have not been enough safety staff available to cover all library open hours, and new schedules designed to circumvent the paying of shift differential and/or overtime, which have led to both reduction in community events and fewer staff working the public services desk, increasing wait times for patron with immediate questions and needs. These concerns were raised with the library board at its last meeting but were met with a barrage of misinformation and lies. In just that one meeting, members of the board claimed that the library doesn't have a say in negotiating the collective bargaining agreement, that the collective bargaining agreement doesn't address library concerns, and that library employees are not being represented by their union. All of these statements are untrue. Lorena has personally sat across from the library director and city manager in past contract negotiations, and the result of collective bargaining agreement has several sections that are entirely devoted to library operations. Library members have been and will remain strongly supported by their fellow AFSMI Local 1891 members, as when the union successfully won an arbitration for the wrongful termination of a library member and got their job back earlier this year. As for the board's suggestion in their last meeting that library employees should form their own, read smaller and weaker union, this constitutes yet another unfair labor practice violation, of which there have been many over the past two years. She asked the mayor, city manager, and council members to thoroughly investigate the actions of the board and library leadership, encourage them to work with both the city and AFSMI to uphold our collective bargaining agreement, and support a better Evanston for residents and patrons. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jeff Garrett, who will be followed by Tracy Olusimbo, and then Valerie Kretschmer.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jeff Garrett. I've been a librarian for 45 years, the last eight of which have been at Evanston Public Library. Before that, I was the Associate University Librarian at Northwestern University. I first want to say what an incredible institution you have here, and I say that coming from a university environment. My colleagues at Evanston Public Library are intelligent, articulate, and dedicated. I think they have been mis-served, in part, by some elements of management practice at Evanston Public Library. I specifically, something that Bridget mentioned, was very distraught over the firing of two of my colleagues who assisted, or actually were instrumental in preventing a crime in progress. They touched the perpetrator, and they didn't let the perpetrator leave, and these were terminable offenses. At the very least, I think there should have been a hearing. Ultimately, the union stepped in, and threw its entire weight behind reinstating these employees. And I have to be very grateful to our union for mobilizing also their legal staff, ultimately leading to the reinstatement of one of these valued colleagues. I look at the possible full independence of Evanston Public Library as a grave mistake. And I was very grateful for the statement from the mayor recently that was reproduced in the public press. So I would fortify, reinforce everything that my colleagues have said. I think we need to very forcefully continue the arrangement of city-library relations and sort of a government-balanced post with checks and balances going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tracy Olusimbo, who will be followed by Valerie Kretschmer, and then Paul Breslin.
My name is Tracy Olusimbo, and I'm an Evanston resident, library employee, and proud union member. As a Black and Latino woman, I take no pleasure in calling out other women of color, but I can't stay silent while our rights are violated. This is about truth, dignity, and accountability. Good intentions don't excuse decisions that harm staff. On October 23rd, during All Staff Day, we learned that leadership purchased a new performance review system called NeoGov. When staff asked why we weren't staying aligned with the city's system, the executive director said, "Because we don't have to." And when asked about oversight, the answer was, "We'll hold each other accountable." This move strips away city oversight, gives administrative staff access to private personnel files, and makes it easier to deny merit increases, and also costs taxpayers thousands while we're already paying for the city's system. Instead of collaborating with city leadership, it's duplicating services, HR, legal, IT, and consultants, violating bylaws and our union contract. This isn't about better service, it's about avoiding accountability. On October 15th, the library board violated its own bylaws by voting on amendments without proper public notice or sharing the proposed changes. If leadership is making major decisions in secret, how can we trust them to keep the library safe? Meanwhile, community programs have been cut by a third, 33%. Staff schedules are constantly shifted to avoid paying fair wages. Beloved events have all disappeared because of leadership retaliation and new schedule restrictions. Union members are being denied the right to adjust schedules for family or medical needs, rights that are actually protected in our contract. We are missing basic logistical means like staff onboarding, person-in-charge training or guidelines, and collection management guidelines. Safety monitor and social worker positions have been eliminated, but somehow, there's always money for redundant HR and IT roles and/or consultants. Approximately $30,000 of public money was wasted fighting a wrongful termination case the library lost, money that could have gone to programs, books, instead of defending bad decisions. Standing up tonight did not come lightly. Union representatives have spent over a year trying to work with leadership, speaking out at board meetings, filing grievances, writing letters, and we've been ignored every single time. Evanston deserves a library that values transparency, accountability, and partnership with the city. We deserve leadership that builds trust, not secrecy, and we deserve a library that serves the people, not itself.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Valerie Kretschmer, who will be followed by Paul Breslin, and then Jeff Smith.
Thank you very much. I live at 807 Davis Street, across the street from 605 Davis, and I'm here to support the project. I'm very grateful for the developers for listening to what people said in previous meetings to reduce the density and to lower the height of the building. One of the things, though, I'm very concerned about is listening to many of the conversations that were had at the last meeting where people were claiming that the use of the Affordable Housing Special Assessment Program was a negative for this project. And I'm really concerned that the council may be shooting themselves in the foot and basically giving a message to the development community that we don't really want you here. The idea of this Affordable Housing Special Assessment Program was to encourage the development and the preservation of affordable housing. This is really the only way we're going to get a lot more affordable housing in this community, which is what our housing gap analysis and our draft housing plan says we need. So I think before people keep talking about how bad the Affordable Housing Special Assessment Program is for the taxpayers of Evanston, they need to really think about what they're saying and hopefully not continue this discussion because we're going to end up with no developers who want to build here. They're going to say life is too short to build in Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Paul Breslin, who will be followed by Jeff Smith, and then Greg Sorenson.
Mayor Bis and members of council, my views on the 605 Davis proposal are already known to you. I've spoken at previous meetings, you've seen the slideshow last Monday, you have the slides, you have a document I wrote about affordable housing. Brief recap: The variances are too large, the tax abatement is too large, the apartments are too small, the affordability expires. It's not going to do that much for affordable housing, I'm afraid. Now, Mayor Bis, I'm concerned about your collaboration with the CEO of Vermillion on a letter sent under your name on official city stationery to discourage Chase Bank from selling property to Vermillion's competitor. I don't know if this action violated any legal statute or regulation, but it does strike me as highly improper. I once asked an eminent poet for a letter of recommendation. He said, "Write the letter, and I will sign it." I considered writing a parody. Paul Breslin is the greatest living poet, give him whatever he wants. But I merely said, "I'm sorry, I can't do that. It doesn't seem right." It still doesn't.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jeff Smith, who will be followed by Greg Sorenson, and then Scott Roberts.
History, historically, is part of Evanston's brand. It's one of the charms like our trees, our homes, our university, our churches that attracted visitors and residents. We should be leveraging that history today and going forward by celebrating and marketing historic Evanston. We don't do that enough. The blocks that radiate from Fountain Square, including the 600 Block of Davis, are historically the most important blocks in Evanston. The first store in Evanston was on that block. Special attention was paid to it in the downtown plan. I sent to each of you a short slideshow on the reasons for upper-story setbacks, which in downtown districts, and especially in Davis, Church, Sherman, and Orington, should start no more than 42 feet above street level to maintain human scale. Upper-story setback requirements specifically were designed to help preserve and protect what remains downtown of historic vintage charm. They should have been discussed at the LUC as part of the evaluation of this project, but the LUC didn't make the findings measuring against the standards of the downtown plan. Yes, this project would bring economic development and some temporary affordable units, not enough to affect overall Evanston market, and taxpayers will subsidize it. But the 12-story portion abutting the sidewalk is triple the height of what is allowed under our zoning and would do violence to the pedestrian experience, largely negating what the four-story portion would otherwise achieve. If there was no tower in this plan, just the 12-story portion budding up against Davis, I'd feel compelled to speak out because of the importance of maintaining human scale in what remains of historic Evanston in a downtown that's seen so much development in the past 30 years. Height's an issue, but mass is a greater issue. It's not necessary to have a far twice that of anything else in Evanston, and triple if you disregard the legal fiction of including the university building. I also sent you scores of comments from Evanston residents showing that the more downtown becomes like a downtown Chicago neighborhood, the less a lot of people like it. So please, require a full width setback above the fourth floor on this project as our planning intended, celebrate and preserve our history, respect our planning, and what remains of what has made downtown Evanston special. And please follow the law in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Greg Sorenson, who will be followed by Scott Roberts, and then Melissa Apelt.
I'm a 30-year Evanston resident in a condo in the 4th Ward. I'm encouraging the council to approve the 605 Davis Project. I didn't wear green on purpose, but also go ask me. I believe Evanston needs to grow its population, and the key to this is more housing density downtown and possibly more upzoning in residential neighborhoods. I don't necessarily consider these options two evils, but building densely downtown, especially in a unicorn spot where nothing of value exists currently, is definitely the more agreeable of the two. I also resent the opposition to this development from a wave of downtown high-rise occupants claiming harm to downtown. Very nice views for me, but not for thee. This development displaces some decades-long eyesores. It may also create demand for more retail downtown in the absence of city action to address the high number of retail vacancies. Bob's Pizza across the street from this development being the latest casualty. I think it should have been approved last month, but the concessions made in the interim, now's the time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Scott Roberts, who will be followed by Melissa Apelt, and then Tony Ray.
Mayor Bis, council members, city staff, thanks for the opportunity. I also want to mourn Bob's Pizza, which could have been still open if this building was built. I'm in support of 605 Davis because it addresses two problems at once. It strengthens our tax base and adds homes, including affordable homes, right where they belong, downtown near transit. Evanston is facing critical budget and housing issues. This isn't the time to kick the can down Davis Street. On housing, this project adds much-needed supply, about 430 new homes with 84 affordable units, which last for 30 years. People say that these are just temporary, but it's 30 years of affordable housing. It's a meaningful onsite contribution in a high-opportunity location. It aligns with the spirit of the Housing for All Strategic Housing Plan, move from explore to measurable action, and put more homes near jobs, schools, and transit. Approving 605 Davis is one concrete step toward the plan's equity and production goals. It also anticipates a small number of District 65 students and a net positive for both school districts. It helps the budget without overloading the schools. District 65 is working through a structural deficit reduction plan after several years of red ink. A stable, growing downtown tax base helps meet that challenge without leaning harder on homeowners. 605 Davis turns an underused lot into long-term revenue, helps steady D-65, adds mixed-income housing where it's most sensible, and brings more customers to our local businesses like Bob's Pizza. It's a practical win for the city and our schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Melissa Apelt, who will be followed by Tony Ray, and then Olin Wilson Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor Bis, and members of the city council. I'm here as a board member of Interfaith Action of Evanston to urge you to vote yes and approve the 605 Davis Street project. I speak on behalf of the people we serve, people who are struggling to find housing, pay the rent, and provide for their households. With 84 units of affordable housing unmatched, and likely unmatched in the foreseeable future, this project will not only open up opportunities for young people and older adults seeking to downsize, it will also allow others to move into existing housing. This ripple effect is significant. Additionally, this development will bring immediate construction fees and jobs, as well as long-term property tax growth for the city. So please, vote yes for a project that opens up possibilities for people at all income levels and offers substantial returns for the City of Evanston. The opportunity is before you. I urge you to take advantage of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tony Ray, who will be followed by Olin Wilson Thomas.
My name is Tony Ray, and I live at the Marion, which is the corner of Davis and Chicago. In fact, I'll be barely half a block from the new building at 605 Davis. So I could selfishly say, "Oh, it's going to be noisy, it's going to be..." So I could selfishly say, "Oh, it's going to be noisy, it's going to be a lot of traffic, construction." That's true for me, but this is good for the city. I'm here tonight to urge you to approve the revised plans for 605 Davis Street. This project will improve a piece of Evanston's downtown that has been an eyesore for too long. In fact, 605 Davis is a rare opportunity to deliver housing supply, affordability, and greater fiscal stability for the city, all in one project. Turning it down means keeping an empty lot that generates nothing for anyone. Please vote yes to 605 Davis.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Olin Wilson Thomas.
I'm Olin Wilson Thomas. I'm a 9th Ward resident. Okay, so I am part of the environment board. I'm speaking on behalf of myself tonight. So as you've heard from Paula Scholl, the sustainability budget has been hit with a double whammy that will severely diminish its ability to deliver on its critical job of making Evanston more sustainable. An attempt to balance the general fund, $100,000 from the wheel tax fund, which was allocated in 2022 when the tax was raised, that was allocated to the sustainability fund, has now been transferred away to the general fund. And also, the costs from other areas have been now put into the sustainability fund. Now the sustainability fund's being asked to do more while being funded with less. But before the fund is severely cut, let's look at some of what this program has done. I'll focus on the Sustainable Evanston Program, which provides small grants to local businesses to help them upgrade their sustainability features. So far, the grants have gone to Perron's Belton Chocolatier to help them replace their old AC unit. Squeeze Box was able to add protective window films, which helped save their inventory as well as lowered energy costs. Hune and Collective Resource were able to buy new EVs. Soul &amp; Smoke, DeSalvo's Pizza, Kurt's Cafe, Dempster Snack Shop, Table to Sticks Ramen, C&amp;W, Brothers K, Lacoste, and many more have participated in this program and have benefited. If you've been to an Evanston business, chances are you've been to a participant of this program. Our local businesses do a heck of a lot for Evanston, and the Sustainable Evanston Program lets the city give back to businesses while meeting sustainability goals. We're Evanston, we're not Trump. We don't cut sustainability funding when the budget gets tight in the midst of a climate crisis. I hope that we can resolve this funding gap. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes a list of people who signed up on the sheet to speak in person. So we'll now move on to those who signed up online, beginning with Eileen O'Neill, followed by Erin Rosen, and then Jennifer Grandy.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Eileen O'Neill. Tonight, you heard from a lot of our members at the library, but as president of Local 1891, I am here to address the assault on our union. Library leadership continues to repeat lies, even though they know the information is false. The first lie they tell is that leadership is not represented in our negotiations and that they need a separate contract. This is not true. The library director sits right next to the city manager at the bargaining table. The second lie they tell is that our contract does not address library operations or staff, and that's why they need a separate contract. This is not true either. You can read our contract and all of the library provisions for yourself. The third lie they tell to our members is that library employees need to separate and form a separate union for representation. Clearly, not true. We represent. The fourth lie they tell, and this is a new lie, that leadership has no idea why we're here tonight. Not true. For almost two years, we have fought the unfair labor practices through grievances and labor meetings, HR complaints, arbitration. We approached the board president directly last December and were rebuffed. We submitted petitions, spoke at board meetings, and rallied. There's absolutely zero possibility that library leadership has no idea why we're here tonight. And the biggest lie of all is that library employees are not city employees. This is completely false, no matter how many times they repeat it. So why do they keep lying? They are lying to undermine our collective power because 1891 stands strong against unfair labor practices, and 1891 stands strong against the hostile work environment that our members have been experiencing for two years. They also tell these lies to evade city oversight, which includes HR. We know HR is not perfect. We have our own concerns with HR around public works and the hiring process, but that doesn't mean that you create a second HR and charge the taxpayer twice. Instead, it means you work with the city in good faith to address concerns. And now they ask for a 10% tax levy increase and a gift of a multi-multi-million-dollar building, giving them the funds to cut and run and leave the public holding the bag. Mayor Bis, you've said that you support unions. We hope that you hear our members tonight, and we hope that you hold the library board accountable, and they in turn hold the director accountable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Erin Rosen, who will be followed by Jennifer Grandy, and then Eric Parker.
Erin Rosen, 4th Ward. I'm speaking directly to the prominent opponents of the 605 Davis Project. To me, there's a split between your advocacy work and your opposition to this project. Claire Kelly reforms medical waste disposal policy. Jeff Rini advocates for disability rights. Jeff Smith defends voting access and our public lakefront. Gull Agah fights to protect our environment. I would characterize these positions as progressive and suspect calling your housing advocacy conservative is offensive, but it is how I see it, and I'm not alone. This does seem to be generational, and I wonder about the moral calculus at play. A group of mostly younger people are coming up here screaming that we're being choked to death on housing, and opponents are throwing any and every argument they can in the hopes that something sticks. I sometimes wonder what you think of us. I imagine you see us as lost fools and useful tools for greedy developers here to destroy our character and financially exploit us by not paying their fair share. But I think you're not arguing in good faith. Gull, you've referenced Paris and their ban on high-rises. That's generally true, but Paris houses the population of Chicago in 18% of the land area. How? No single-family homes. So if we're willing to rebuild the scale and density of Paris, then yes, we can ban high-rises too. And sure, there is a carbon cost to this tower, but compare total lifetime cost of housing people here versus putting them in 400 single-family homes on the outskirts of Plano, Texas or Illinois, doesn't matter. We have to do better as a people. Our cities are dynamic systems, evolving organisms. We break down here because too many people stick brooms in the gears, turn the animal into taxidermy. We must choose to progress or resign ourselves to stagnation and decline. Approve the 605 Davis Project.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jennifer Grandy, who will be followed by Eric Parker, and then Mike Breclaw.
Hi, Jennifer Grandy, 4th Ward. So recently, the Economic Development Committee met again to figure out how to activate downtown, and the goals are noble, but we still need a stable, critical mass of people to make downtown thrive. For years, we've had our lunch eaten economically by Old Orchard and Northbrook Court, and now even those Class A malls are pursuing residential development to diversify foot traffic, so read the room. I would also like to address common arguments we hear for every multi-unit building proposed. First, the allegation that families do not reside in studios in one-bedroom units, and secondly, that this will just be student housing. Families can just be two people. As of 2023, nearly a third of U.S. households were couples without children. That doesn't include single people, by the way. This figure is projected to increase. From personal experience, these families can thrive in studio and one-bedroom units. Secondly, a good amount of current residents were once the Northwestern students that opponents deride. My husband, an NU alum who rented here until we bought a home here, is one example, and we're not unique. Like it or not, the university is Evanston's largest marketing force for new residents. Many younger residents can't afford to purchase a home or live in one of our many retirement homes. So what happens when there isn't enough rental supply for those who want to stay? We lose them. But please, keep asking why our population stagnates or declines. So in closing, it's time to evolve away from the vacant lot and also the magical thinking that a critical mass of people will just show up every day downtown. Build 605 Davis.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Eric Parker, who will be followed by Mike Breclaw, and then Dana Janturans.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Eric Parker, an Evanston resident for over 10 years and also a library employee. The library has always been where our children grow curious, where our elders stay connected, and our families find belonging. This is why this conversation matters, because right now, the library's foundation is cracking, its leadership and its culture is unsteady. You are being asked to consider three major changes: creating an internal human resource department, separating the library from the city, and raising taxes through a 10% levy increase. Each of these deserves careful thought. Taken together, they reveal a pattern that should be given a pause. Placing HR entirely inside the library removes the neutral oversight that keeps workplaces fair and transparent. It gives too much control to a small circle of leadership at a time when trust is already fragile. HR is supposed to be a safe space for employees. If that space becomes internal and unprotected, people stop speaking up and speaking out of fear that the silence casts cost everyone. Separation from the city carries similar risks. Independence sounds appalling, but it would be meaning losing shared systems, shared accountability, and shared support. It would drive up costs and leave the library to navigate alone. This truth is the library serves the best when it stands with the community, not apart from it. And the proposed 10% levy increase, honestly, that must wait until the library proves stability and transparency. Our residents should not be asked to pay more when the internal structure itself needs repair. Fiscal responsibility begins with earning trust and not assuming it. This is not about blaming individuals, it's about recognizing a culture that has become disconnected from the values, fairness, balance, and respect that our city stands for. I respectfully ask council to reject the internal HR, reject the separation from the city, and reject the 10% levy until accountability and morale are truly restored. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mike Breclaw, who will be followed by Dana Janturans, and then Jesper Stelter.
My name is Mike Breclaw. For the past 25 years, I've lived in the 2nd Ward of Evanston on Davis Street, about 3/4 of a mile west of the 605 Davis Street site. I'm here to strongly support the project and advocate for the council to do the same. The project will add enormously to the financial viability not only of the downtown, but to the city as a whole. And not only does it provide much-needed affordable housing, but it also adds to the overall housing stock of the city, which also will lead to improved overall housing affordability. And I'm also an architect, and I've spent much of my career working on multifamily housing projects across the region, across the country, and several in Evanston. There hasn't been a more difficult and risky time to achieve viability for multifamily development projects since 2008. Projects of scale not only in Chicago but across the country are really on a knife's edge financially to prove viability. Finding investors, finding financing, and managing construction costs are significant risks that a developer takes on, and community opposition should not be such a severe risk. I think that we should applaud the perseverance of the developer in pursuing this project, and we should stand behind them, not against them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Dana Janturans, who will be followed by Jesper Stelter, and then Sam Gelman. Sorry, Sam Gaiman.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dana Janturans, and I live in the 9th Ward. I'm a renter in the 9th Ward. And I'm here to encourage you not to let the perfect be the enemy of the good with the 605 Davis Project. I work in affordable housing outside of Evanston, and I have, you know, I have some ideas. There's a fantasy I have for this property. I would love to see 430 units of fully affordable there, but that's not what's on the table. So we need to look at what's actually in front of us. You know, if it was 430 units, fully affordable, I'd be up here as well. But, you know, we have to be realistic about it. The project on the table is 430 units with 84 units of affordable, which is a huge gift. Besides the issues that people have already brought up, you know, we're bringing new residents into downtown. I love my bubble tea, I love to go to the restaurants, go to the theater, movie theater, all that stuff, but we need a critical mass of people going, otherwise those downtown businesses can't survive. It's, you know, we hear a lot about the property tax, but it's going to bring a lot of sales tax into the city. And as for the property tax, the reason why the developer can get the 20% level is because this is a low affordability community. That's what that program, the Affordable Housing Special Assessment Program level that they're looking at, that's what that's for. So we're a low affordability community, and we're saying, maybe, hmm, I don't know, should we take these, you know, 80-plus units that are handed to us? My answer to that would be yes. I mean, there is, you know, as I said, I work in affordable housing. If anybody wants to find me after and hear about how fun it is and how convoluted and complicated it is to get affordable housing done, I'm happy to talk to anyone. Here is a developer telling us they're going to build the whole building and give us these affordable units? I'm 100% for it, and I think you should be too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jesper Stelter, who will be followed by Sam Gaiman, and then Stephen Looks like Jesper Stelter may no longer be here, in which case we'll move ahead with Sam Gaiman, who will be followed by Stephen Yas, and then Alf McConnell.
Thank you very much. My name is Sam Gaiman. I live at 807 Davis. One day, maybe, I'll live at 605 Davis if this meeting goes the right direction. I was going to take a bunch of notes about all the things that people said in opposition, and I don't have many. People really came out in support tonight, which is really exciting. I've been to four or five of these meetings in a row. I was the lone nerd or so who sat through like the entire budget meeting two weeks ago just to hear about it, and people turned out tonight, which is fantastic. I first want to commend, I believe it was Councilmember Newsma, who proposed a small change to the development, which personally, I did not necessarily think was necessary, but I think compromise is important, and I think that was excellent policy, to say what you needed to get to yes, and then give them time to make those changes, and now they're back with those changes. I think that's great public policy. I think it's to be commended, so thank you very much for doing that. I just want to remind everyone that, you know, you're not going to please everyone. Originally, it was too much traffic, and then it was too little parking, and then it was wind tunnels, and then it was tax breaks, and then someone proposed we should buy the land even though we don't have the money for it. Now it's personal attacks at the mayor. I mean, it's never going to stop, right? And at some point, we have to just find the best option in front of us. This is a really good option. It gets a lot of our goals all in one fell swoop: affordable housing, more people downtown, more tax revenue for the city. It's a fantastic thing. And the next thing I want to remind people is time is, as always, of the essence. People are going to continue to try to throw wrenches in the system to delay this. Every single month this sits in front of the council is a month of property tax that we don't get back. It's a month that people don't have a place to live. So we've got to get it done. We've got to get it done now. And finally, I just want to say thank you to the people behind me, thank you to the people who've come in this room, thank you to the woman who lives half a block away and says it's going to be noisy for me, but I still support it. It means a lot to me, it means a lot to people in my generation. We really need this development. I'm so grateful for everyone for coming out tonight. Please say yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Stephen Yas, who will be followed by Alf McConnell, and then Sheila Sullivan.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and citizens of Evanston. I'm Stephen Yas, a resident of Evanston since 1979. The last 12 years, I was living, working in Shanghai, China, and working in the Middle East and all around Asia and doing buildings significantly taller than this. I was on the Plan Commission for nine years, Preservation Commission for six years, President of the Evanston Arts Center, and a member of Design Evanston. I was co-author of the Comprehensive Plan from 1993, which created the zoning ordinance they're using right now. It was a three-dimensional urban design comprehensive plan, especially for the downtown. It was a three-dimensional urban design comprehensive plan, especially for the downtown. It perpetuated residential towers in designated areas, for example, along the rail line and at wider streets. I'm here tonight to urge you not to approve the 605 Davis Tower in its current form. I have issues with the height and also the structural system. While I recognize the value of growth, transit-oriented, and affordable housing in our city, this proposal demands too much of our community in too many ways. I've had the honor of meeting with the developers and Aldrin Burns twice. I've reviewed their drawings, studies, and financial performa. They have lowered the height of the proposed building by two floors, but it's just not enough. The base of the building that we talked about has significantly improved at two stories. It's at the same datum line as the university building adjacent to it to the east. It doesn't need to be the tallest building between Chicago and Milwaukee, which the Chase Building is. The project is more about an economic shell and less about architecture and context. I'm suggesting a mass timber structure as a means to create a financial performer together with lowering the height of the building. I'm suggesting a 20-floor building, which is a two-floor concrete podium like they have, and an 18-floor mass timber structure that can house 320 units, including 65 affordable units. Evanston uses the 2021 IBC code, which allows for 18 floors of mass timber. Also, the lead has not kept up. Today, we seek passive house and ILFI certification. Mass timber significantly reduces carbon emissions. This, together with the developer-proposed all-electric building, are the wave of the future. And it would be great to market the building that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Alf McConnell, who will be followed by Sheila Sullivan, and then Linda Damaschek.
Speaking as a developer of 45 years and a developer of affordable housing for the past 30 years, I can say that this deal is a great deal for the developer, that is 605 Davis Street, and a horrible deal for affordable housing, and a horrible deal for the city of Evanston. For the city to even consider a zoning variance, the city should first require the developer to submit a sources and uses of funds statement. Such a statement is required by the prudent man rule and by good due diligence procedures. For $40 million for the real estate tax abatement and another $20 million plus in tax credits, it works out to be $700,000-plus per apartment. For that many dollars, you could develop 250 affordable apartments. Therefore, I urge the city council to turn down this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sheila Sullivan, who will be followed by Linda Damaschek.
Good evening. I urge you to vote against ordinance 66025 for the special use permit to develop 601 615 Davis. The proposed outside building does not meet the current city zoning requirements, which are subject to change. So why are you rushing this building through now under a special use permit? That seems to be an indiscreet use of the current administrative process. The Land Use Commission voted against recommending that the city move ahead with it, and several council members have had concerns with the project. One told the developer to adjust the design to lower its height from 31 stories to somewhere in the mid-20s, which suggests 24 to 26 stories to me, not just the other side of 30. A two-story reduction from 31 to 29 floors is a laughable adjustment for a building of this scale. The proposal remains three and a half times taller than zoning allows, and it will also exacerbate wind and vehicular congestion. Either District 65 or Evanston taxpayers will effectively subsidize this $40 million tax, dollar tax abatement for the developer. This expensive building with rents as high as $2,891 a month for a studio will result in less money for struggling schools and higher property taxes for residents. We, as taxpayers, are being asked to subsidize $40 million in taxes while also swallowing a 13.7% property tax increase. And schools are forced to close due to budget shortfalls. This demonstrates unconscionable community leadership by all those who support this project. This project does not speak to me of inclusionary housing, but rather of a good financial deal for a developer. I'm also concerned about the mayor's documented involvement with Vermillion Development to influence the sale of the property to the city. I believe that Mayor Bis, you should recuse yourself from all decision-making on this issue. I shouldn't have to remind you that Evanstonians are the most important consideration in this decision: the taxpayers, the schoolchildren, everyone else that'll have to bear this burden. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Linda Damaschek.
Good evening, Linda Damaschek. I really encourage every single one of the city council members to read the letter that is on the city letterhead from Mayor Bis to the Chase Bank regarding the developer Vermillion. I have to tell you that personally, I found it shockingly unethical. And I think it's appropriate that the mayor recuse himself and does not vote on this development at all. I also agree with Alf McConnell's request to have these statements of funds regarding, you know, where, where is Vermillion getting their money? This is a prudent step that a city council should undertake, and I encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes the in-person portion of this evening's public comment. We now move to the online public comments, beginning with Stephen Hyatt Leonard, who will be followed by Sue Lobach, and then Mary Rosinsky.
Good evening, members of council. Councilmember Harris, Mr. Mayor, and City Manager Stokes. I come to you tonight to fight for the rights of people with disabilities who use ADA paratransit, who need snow removal done by the city in their access points in order for us to be active members of the community. I just want to, I just want to inform you that with the new budget that is being proposed for public works, this needs to happen to meet the needs of the community who use ADA paratransit, by itself included. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sue Lobach, who will be followed by Mary Rosinsky.
Good evening. This is Sue Lobach. I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, sorry. I'm Sue Lobach. I work at Connections for the Homeless. I'm sorry, I can't be there in person. We strongly support approval of the new building proposed for 605 Davis Street. Joining forces for affordable housing speaks in favor of developments when they will contribute to housing affordability in the community and do so beyond what is required. This building certainly does that with a 20% set aside that will result in 84 new affordable units, an unprecedented addition in Evanston's history. We're glad to see the state of Illinois' Affordable Housing Special Assessment Program working as an effective incentive for increasing the percentage of affordable units. This incentive is a trade-off that works. Affordable units plus long-term revenue growth is a win compared to continued stagnation. To see an unused piece of downtown property be redeveloped into such an asset that meets the needs of multiple sectors, including those who have been struggling to stay in Evanston, is extremely encouraging, and it's what we've been hoping for as we watch the types of development that are coming to the community. And I'm really proud of Evanston public commenters tonight, regardless of what the decision is for the support that they are showing to this development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The final speaker is Mary Rosinsky.
Hi, thank you very much. I want to encourage you really to listen to Alf McConnell. He is an expert in affordable housing. He's been doing it almost his whole life. And I don't think the only answer is this or not this. Evanston would be better with a project which provides 15% affordable housing or 60%, and this falls under the 25% tax abatement initiative for the developer. Then Evanston would still receive about 75% of the taxes due for schools and other taxing bodies. Under this, there would be 64 affordable units in this building. The city part that the taxes would receive would be probably just something under $500,000. That could be divided into maybe a couple hundred, 100 additional payments to residents in need of up to like $800 or $900. So we would end up with far more than 84 people being helped. But we'd still have the bulk of our money we need for our schools. So I think, you know, it's not this or that. I think we have to look at this and go, how, what's best for Evanston residents? There is that false narrative going around that if the city does not approve the current deal, no one else will buy it. I've been in real estate for 40 years. There's always another deal. There's always another buyer, and you've got to try to make it happen. I would like to see this work at the right, if the right, if everyone can come to the table, but quit pitting residents against each other. There's a way to make something happen without doing that. There was another buyer at the table, but as you've heard, the mayor and staff interjected themselves into a real estate discussion that the owner was having with a different buyer. I do support any development which contributes to our tax base. The taxes cover the cost of running our city and our schools. This property tax would be about $2.5 to $3 million a year, but the way this deal is structured right now, he'll be paying about $22,000 a year for the first year, and it'll be 30 years before he gets up to 100%. That is not good for Evanston, and we're taxed burdened as it is. We can't be getting tax breaks like this to developers who are getting $2,800 to $6,200 a month in rent. That, we can do better than that. He's going to be collecting, and I don't begrudge him a profit, but he's going to be getting $17 to $18 million a year, and we're paying for all the services for every unit in that building. It's not fair to the Evanston residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for the evening. We now move to special orders of business. Councilmember Kelly, do you have a motion on item SP1?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
Sorry, I just want to make a comment. I thought we should acknowledge, just a quick moment, our librarians and our library staff. Just to say that, you know, I think we all acknowledge our libraries being a really incredibly special democratic space, inclusive space, that reflects our values of literacy, equity, community, and our librarians are really, and our library staff are the heart of that system. And I think when our library employees and librarians are speaking out about working conditions, it's not just a labor issue, it's a community issue, and we need to listen. So I am, and I think we really need to begin some real constructive collaboration, and I just want to say this so folks know, we do have, correct, City Manager Stokes, November 19th, we'll be meeting together, the city council with the library board, I believe. And I think that's a good step to working collaboratively to resolve.
My understanding is I believe the president of the library board has agreed to that.
Okay, thank you. And thank you all for coming.
Thank you very much. Now, do you have a motion on item SP1?
Sure. I'd like to move item SP1, 2024 greenhouse gas emissions inventory and 2025 action agenda.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves to accept and place on file the 2024 greenhouse gas emission inventory and 2025 action agenda. Councilmember Newsma seconds. We will begin with a presentation from staff, followed by discussion, and then one presumes a vote.
Good evening. My name is Cara Pratt, Chief Sustainability and Resilience Officer for the city of Evanston. It's been over a year since we provided our update on our community-wide greenhouse gas emissions. Delays were due to some data discrepancies with ComEd last year because of the system-wide change in account numbers, and because we were occupied with a healthy buildings ordinance, and we thought at that time you might be sick of seeing us at city council, so we delayed this for a while, but we're back. So let's get right into it. Staff annually solicits data from ComEd, NICOR, CMAP, MWRD, Northwestern, and our waste haulers. Then we combine it with our own data, feed it through a series of Excel formulas using EPA emissions factors and conversions, producing a unit of metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent emissions, which we are now referring to as fossil fuel pollution. We've been doing these calculations in-house for over a decade, and our community has made significant reductions in pollution since our 2005 baseline year. As of the end of 2024, we've reduced emissions by 43.3%. If we include the procurement of renewable energy certificates or RECs, we've reduced emissions by 49%. As a reminder, RECs are legal claims to renewable electricity we use to help meet our goals and cancel out some of our emissions from electricity. The city procures RECs for our municipal electricity accounts, and on behalf of all community members enrolled in aggregation through MC Squared, and institutions like Northwestern also procure RECs. In the future, it may be worth evaluating the costs and benefits of buying RECs versus directly funding community pollution reduction and resilience programs. It may also be beneficial to set goals or establish a policy on the percentage or volume of RECs used to achieve our climate goals over time, because right now, we don't have any goals pertaining to RECs. Now, some very good news and cause for celebration. Using 2023 data, the goal of reducing emissions by 50% by 2025 from the 2005 baseline has been met. This is in part through purchasing RECs. Our remaining emissions-related carb goals are an 80% reduction in emissions by 2035 and a 100% reduction or elimination of fossil fuel pollution by 2050. So this shows the same information, but in table form. Though that 50% emissions reduction goal was met in 2023, emissions were slightly higher in 2024. This is not cause for major concern. Data fluctuates year over year, and staff will continue to evaluate progress towards all goals annually. Now, let's examine the sectors or sources of fossil fuel pollution in Evanston: electricity, methane gas, transportation, and waste. We've reduced emissions in all sectors, but there's more progress in some sectors than others. There have been significant reductions, for example, from transport, electricity, and waste, and much less progress in gas. You'll notice that electricity use has increased from last year just slightly, but it's still significantly lower than in the past several years. Energy efficiency measures should continue to reduce community-wide electricity usage, but at the same time, building and vehicle electrification will increase electricity usage. Staff will continue to follow these trends closely, especially as electricity prices have increased significantly over the past few months. One note on waste: that tiny sliver of emissions attributed to waste does not account for the full impact of manufacturing and delivering goods, waste hauling, disposal, and other supply chain emissions. Though the fossil fuel pollution attributed to waste disposal is minimal according to our methodologies for greenhouse gas emissions inventorying, the environmental impact of waste is significant, and continued efforts that support circularity are essential. We'll look at the same data a few different ways. First, comparing the two pie charts. The pie of community-wide emissions is shrinking, and the size of pie pieces is changing over time. The share of emissions from transportation, in blue, is dramatically smaller in 2024 compared to 2005, while the share of emissions from gas, in red, has grown. Now, we'll see the same as bar charts. Compare that dark blue 2005 emissions to the light blue 2024 emissions. You see really significant reductions in emissions from transport. This is due to fuel efficiency or tailpipe emission standards improvements, though notably not due to vehicle miles traveled. We're actually driving more, but in more efficient vehicles. Progress in electricity and gas emissions can be attributed to energy efficiency improvements and the greening of the grid, or ComEd's electric grid using fewer fossil fuels and more nuclear and renewables. One last time, these same charts, but drawing your attention to how natural gas emissions have overtaken the other sectors over time. The largest contributor of fossil fuel pollution in Evanston is now natural gas. It used to be electricity, followed by transport. This is why the This is why the policy and programmatic focus of our team lately is on energy from buildings. The Stretch Energy Code, the Healthy Buildings Ordinance, Sustain Evanston, and the Evanston Green Homes Pilot. And now my colleague Kirsten Drehopovega will walk us through progress on implementing Thank you, Cara. Some context for everyone. Each year, our team creates a citywide sustainability, action, and resilience agenda to shape our focus and give a comprehensive annual update. This encompasses efforts from our division and many others within the city, as well as community-wide efforts. Apologies in advance for two wordy slides. We have tried to group and code this long list for better clarity, with a black check mark meaning completed, the purple approximate sign meaning nearly complete, the green arrow on track for 2026, and the orange pause sign meaning on pause. Each agenda item will have a one-sentence update, so please bear with me. Starting off, propose Building Performance Standards Ordinance and Stretch Code Ordinance. Both ordinances were approved by council in early 2025. Implement HBO. The Technical Committee and Accountability Board will begin meeting in late October and early November respectively, which will flesh out the targets and implementation of the ordinance. Finalize the Community Choice Aggregation and Municipal Electricity Agreements. The RFPs are drafted and will be advertised by the end of 2025. Identify near-term implementable actions of Envision Evanston 2045 related to CARP. We are waiting for EE45 to be approved, but this is periodically discussed with the CARP Implementation Task Force. Finalize a Residential Refuse and Yard Waste Franchise Agreement. This is complete. Finalize a Compost Waste Franchise Agreement. This will be complete before the end of 2025. Complete Evanston Green Homes Pilot and Pursue Expansion. 50 units will be completed by quarter two of 2026. Complete Circularity Roadmap. The draft is complete, and the document will be reviewed by different groups of stakeholders. Finish the Environmental Equity Investigation. This project will be complete by the end of 2025. Support Zoning Code Rewrite to remove barriers to permitting solar, heat pumps, geothermal, EV installation, et cetera. So this point pertains only to the future zoning code and is paused until the passage of the Comprehensive Plan and future subsequent start of zoning code rewrite. Propose Preservation and Deconstruction Ordinance. This effort is paused due to federal grant pauses and closure of the Rebuilding Exchange. Reconvene the largest employers mentioned in CARP. This is on pause at this time, but the CARP Implementation Task Force will be revisiting. The next three items will all be completed by mid-2026. Updating the Bike Plan, the rollout of bicycle and micro mobility parking infrastructure, and expanding the Divvy bike share and deploying the Divvy scooter share. Following that, propose an ordinance to codify where micro mobility devices can operate. The policy team is currently reviewing options. Implement the Mayor's Monarch Pledge and Meaningfully Track. The 2024 pledge report is complete. The 2025 pledge is on track, currently being implemented, and will be reported in December. Deploy Accessible Solar Program. The RFP is issued and will be awarded by the end of 2025. Complete Robert Crown Solar Power Purchase Agreement. This project will be complete by the end of quarter one of 2026. Establish Citywide Tree Goals. Internal conversations are ongoing. Moving on to the ongoing goals, many of you have seen these before and will see them again as the city continues to progress. I promise this is my last slide, and we're gonna get through it. Secure additional funding sources. There has not been concrete progress in 2025, but there are pending grant applications for bicycle education and the stretch code implementation. Complete long-term strategy on meaningful renewable electricity procurement. Depending on the results of the Community Choice Aggregation and Municipal Electricity Agreement RFPs, staff will continue to pursue innovative options. Expand EV charging network. 30 additional ports will be installed in early 2026 at the Main Library, Levy Center, and Prieto Community Center. Expand food waste diversion opportunities. The second compost drop-off site is now accessible at Gibbs Morrison Cultural Center, and there is now composting at the Farmer's Market. Support the Climate Coach Program. The coaches are managed by Climate Action Evanston and have been deployed. Expand bike and pedestrian infrastructure. So the following pedestrian projects were completed in 2025. Greenwood from McDaniel to Fowler, Lee from Dodge to Florence, and the following pedestrian projects are ongoing and on track. Dempster Street Beach House, Dodge Avenue and Lee Street, Dodge Avenue and Monroe Street, Sheridan Road and Clinton. Next, improve road and sidewalk safety for all modes of transport. The city and the recylery hosted the Summer Cycling Education Series, which is a road safety training for people over the age of 14 and families, as well as two smart cycling sessions, and there is a planned future after-school workshop with ETHS. Support Evanston-based institutions to develop and successfully implement climate plans. The D-65 Climate Plan was passed and implementation is underway. Additionally, D-65 and D-202 each received $25,000 from Sustain Evanston. Expand biodiversity throughout the city. This is an ongoing internal, this is an ongoing internal and community-wide effort, including finalizing the Parks and Greenspace Strategic Plan, the Dempster Street Beech Native Planting and Invasives Removal, Forestry's Tree Plantings and Tree Giveaways, Natural Habitat Evanston Tree and Shrub Giveaways, and many other efforts. Continue lead pipe replacement. This is an ongoing effort. 305 service lines have been replaced in 2025 so far, and progress can be viewed on the City of Evanston's Public Water Service Line Dashboard. Continue to implement Sustain Evanston Grant Program. The Sustain Evanston team awarded 34 Evanston Institutions Grants up to $25,000 for a total of $500,000 this year. Deploy CARP Implementation and Data Dashboard. The Fossil Fuel Pollution Dashboard is nearly complete, but the CARP Implementation Dashboard is on hold for now. Establish a local voluntary carbon offset fund. Conversations and coordination around this effort are ongoing. Continue municipal fleet electrification. There are 31 electric vehicles in the city fleet, which accounts for 6.2% of the total fleet. Continue municipal building decarbonization and LED installation. Municipal building LED replacement is estimated at approximately 60%, but this is a first attempt at quantifying this data. There are properties with unknown conversion rates, and the measurement is oversimplified. It does not account for varied property size or total LEDs, nor does it account for streetlight LED conversion. Continue municipal solar installation. This is ongoing. Robert Crown was mentioned earlier, but other spaces are in the works. Continue to draft, finally, continue to draft green procurement guidelines. Our team is working with a nationwide cohort on best practice policy creations. I know that was a lot to absorb, so please let us know if you have any questions or need Wonderful. If anything does come up, please let us know if you have any questions.
Seeing no discussion with the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns is out of the room. Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis, is she still on?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on. Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against the motion carries, and the agenda is accepted and placed on file. Thanks so much for your work. It was exhausting hearing that list, and, well, I bet doing it's more exhausting, so thank you particularly for the work. There is one technical issue with the public comment, and I would ask folks to always use the publicly available public comment signup. I think there may be some public comment links floating around through the kind of, you know, historical memory of the collective Evanston community that may be not broken, but also not checked frequently. But there's one more speaker who was, made an effort to sign up this afternoon, Carl Klein with two minutes.
Thank you for accommodating me. I would like to provide some clarification on the proposed plan development at 605 Davis. At the April meeting of the Preservation Commission, representatives from SCB, Campbell Coil Real Estate, and Vermillion Development submitted for review and comment on their proposed plan development at 605 Davis Street that includes the landmark-designated University Building at the northwest corner of Davis Street and Chicago Avenue. The Preservation Commission, per City Code Section 283G, 13 and 15, reviewed the proposed plan development at 605 Davis and provided comments on its potential effect on historic, cultural, architectural, or archaeological significant areas, sites, structures, or objects. Also, we submitted written testimony to the Land Use Commission for consideration per Code Section 283G20. Here is a summary of the meeting as reflected in the meeting minutes. Commissioners asked if the southern volumes along Davis Street could be better articulated to be more complimentary of surrounding design vocabularies. Commissioners asked that these volumes be further studied in the context of their surroundings and encourage the development team to look, to interpret historic development patterns in an authentic way that helps better activate and provide human-scale connection to these elements. The Commission recommended further study of the use of materials, facade articulation, and detailing for the easternmost mass adjacent to the University Building to create additional visual interest, texture, and definition in an effort to further break down the scale of the brick volume and create a more legible composition that takes inspiration from adjacent design vocabularies. And the Commission recommended that the development team continue to study the physical connection between the proposed structure and the University Building, particularly the University Building's southwest corner, to ensure that the proposed development is set back from the street to neither obscure portions of the landmark structure nor exposed portions of the building historically meant to abut an adjacent structure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now reconclude public comment and move on with SP2. Is there a motion relative to SP2?
Mr. Mayor, I will move item SP2, Resolution 100R25, approving an honorary street name designation.
Second.
And Councilmember Harris seconds.
Councilmember Newsma moves adoption of Resolution 100-R25. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns is out of the room. Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Aye. Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against the motion carries, but don't clap because there's some discussion forthcoming. Councilmember Harris, followed by Kelly.
I couldn't, my computer was in the way, I couldn't get to my light. This is part of a group that comes out of the Second Ward that does work at Harbor Payne, gets rid of Buckthorn, and does a really good job. I pulled one or two weeds with them, so I can't say I did any yeoman's work, but just a great group of people that are trying to keep Evanston natural, get rid of the bad stuff, the bad weeds. So I am very much in favor of this.
Councilmember Kelly.
I also just want to express my gratitude to these volunteers for pitching in to just make our community more beautiful, and just for their love and care of our natural surroundings. Thank you.
Amen to all of that, and now you may clap. We now come to the consent agenda. Are there items that folks would like to see removed from the consent agenda? Councilmember Kelly?
Is there any chance we're gonna bio-break? Because it's been since we've been here for three hours, five minutes.
I think that's a great idea. So the city council will stand at ease, oh, excellent point. We're gonna figure out what's polled, so that folks who, and then vote on the unanimous part, so that some folks will be released, and then we'll take a brief break. So what would folks like to see, if anything, would folks like to see removed from the consent agenda? I have item A2.
PD1.
PD1. If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I move the approval of the consent.
Hold on, hold on. What? Sorry. Are we good? There's a lot of whispering over here. Go ahead.
I move approval of the consent agenda minus those said.
Second.
Councilmember Herakakis moves the approval of the consent agenda with the following two exceptions, items A2 and PD1. Councilmember Harris seconds. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns is still out of the room. Councilmember Sufferton?
I'm saying, oh, no, I don't. I vote yes.
Okay. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. The consent agenda with the two enumerated exceptions is adopted, and now the city council will stand at ease, and we will reconvene at 8:20 sharp. Everybody stop. The council reconvene at 8:14 PM. The press looks nervous. It's all, it's all appropriate. Councilmember Isles moves to reconsider the vote on the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Newsma seconds. Will the clerk please take the role on the motion to reconsider? If this passes, there may be another removal from the consent agenda.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
You probably know.
Councilmember Sufferton, I think you're muted.
I have a stop.
Oh, Councilmember Davis?
Actually, just sitting here with the voteless floor, I thought we were taking a bio-break.
Yeah, so this is a motion to reconsider. I think someone wants to remove something additional from the consent agenda. So we're trying to reconsider, this is a motion to reconsider the consent agenda vote. If it passes, then I think something else is gonna get pulled before the, and then a revote of the slimmed-down consent agenda would occur.
What's gonna get pulled?
A5.
A5, apparently.
Sorry to spoil the surprise.
And P1. PD1.
No, no, PD1's already been pulled.
Oh, we're not, okay.
Um, A5? Okay, sure.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the, the vote on the consent agenda has been reconsidered. Councilmember Isles, is there something else you'd like to pull?
Yes, sorry, for the hassle, I need to pull A5.
Second.
That doesn't require a second. Is there a motion on the consent agenda now?
I move the consent agenda minus items E2, A5, and PD1.
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves adoption of the consent agenda with the following three exceptions, A2, A5, and PD1. Councilmember everybody, but I think Herakakis was first, seconds. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the consent agenda with the three exemptions just named, that's A2, A5, and PD1 is adopted, and now the city council will, for real, stand at ease, and I would ask folks to return by 8:22. All right, the city council will come back to order. We begin with item A2, where I'm guessing Councilmember Sufferton prefers not to make a motion, would someone else care to make a motion on item A2?
I'll move approval of A2.
Councilmember Herakakis moves approval of BMO Harris Amazon Credit Card Activity. Councilmember Harris seconds. Seeing no discussion with the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
I'm saying.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
I didn't hear that vote, Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
With eight voting in favor, none voting against, and one abstention, the motion carries, and the credit card activity is approved. Now on item A5, Councilmember Sufferton, do you care to make a motion?
Sure. I move approval of item A5, approval of single-source purchase of Cisco CUCM and UCCX license renewal for 2025.
Second.
Councilmember Sufferton moves approval of the single-source purchase. Councilmember Harris seconds. Councilmember Isles?
I'll explain my role in the kerfuffle before the break. I can't vote on CDW. My wife used to work for them, and we still have stock.
Will the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Isles.
I abstain.
Councilmember Newsma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, and one abstention, the motion carries, and the single-source purchase is approved. Now on item PD1, Councilmember Herakakis, do you have a motion?
Sure. I move approval of PD1, ordinance 66-025, approving a special-use permit for a new 31-story mixed-use residential plan development at 601-615-Davis Street and 604-608-Chicago Avenue in the D3 downtown core district.
I second.
Councilmember Herakakis moves introduction of ordinance 66-025. Councilmember Isles, seconds. Is there any discussion? The thing about discussion is someone's got to go first. Councilmember Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I continue to not support this project. I believe that a building of a height of about 24 stories is more appropriate in this area. It still would give us, I believe Mr. Yas mentioned, and his numbers were not far off from my guesses, so I take it that means I guessed fairly well, because I'll defer to your knowledge over mine, that a 24-story building would give us somewhere in the neighborhood of 300 to 320 units, with probably 60 to 70 affordable units also being in that building. I think that's much more appropriate for this particular location. It is not settling for a drive-through, a chase drive-through, but it is seeing development. But the important thing about any development is that development must be appropriate for the area in which it is being planned, and I believe that a building of this height is too large. I do have one question for staff, potentially. I don't know what our policy is. When we put affordable units in a building, are those required to be scattered throughout the building? Okay, I assume so, but I just wanted to check and make sure. I also want to say that I'm glad I didn't send this back to Land Use, because it would have been a waste of their time to simply look at a reduction of two stories and 11 units in the building. But yeah, I cannot support this building as it stands, as it's proposed.
Councilmember Newsma, followed by Sufferton.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I am going to support this proposal. I want to begin by reviewing what's changed since we saw it last time. The building has come down in height by about 10%. It was 330 feet. It's now 299 feet. The unit count has come down from 430 to 419, but at the same time, we have added 10 additional two-bedroom units, which speaks to the need for housing in that size range. This building will have 84 inclusionary units, down from 86, and 40 onsite parking spaces, which means 153 spaces will be leased from the city for more than $200,000 a year. I'm going to support this proposal for three main reasons. Number one, we need more housing. We need more housing in Evanston. We need more housing in the Chicago area. We need more housing around the country. Number two, we need more affordable housing. We need more affordable housing for the lower-income members of our community. We've had an inclusionary housing ordinance in Evanston since 2007. Since that time, we have built 67 inclusionary units under that ordinance, less than four a year. This project with 84 inclusionary units is more, will give us more inclusionary units than we have built in the 18 years that the inclusionary housing ordinance has been in our books. Number three, I am supporting this project because of the economic impact it's going to bring to downtown. 400-plus, say 500, whatever the number of residents downtown, will bring not only economic vitality in terms of the dollars that they will spend at local grocery stores, local shops, local restaurants, but it will help bring back the vibrancy of our downtown, since we are so solely missing the office workers that were here pre-pandemic and quite honestly are not coming back. I am also very mindful that downtown business owners that are currently doing business in Evanston have their eyes on city council and are holding off, potentially, on plans to expand their operations or recommend to their colleagues and business partners that they consider Evanston for expansion, because they're nervous. They're nervous that the city of Evanston doesn't support, doesn't support development like this. I received an email from the owner of a business that I'm sure everyone would know that has been very successful in Evanston for a number of years. I'm just going to quote a little bit from this letter. This is just to let you know, people are aware of Evanston not being the best retail location, especially with continued opposition to development. He told his business associates to wait and see if Davis Street gets approved, as well as the other upcoming proposals, and then they'll make a final decision about which direction to explore. They're looking at Evanston. They're honestly looking at Milwaukee. I would like to keep those jobs in Evanston. I would like to keep that activity in Evanston. I would like to support existing businesses and businesspeople by demonstrating to them that we can get stuff done in Evanston. So I am supportive of this project. I appreciate the changes the developers have made to accommodate my concerns. Thank you.
Councilmember Sufferton, followed by Kelly.
Yeah, is there a representative of Vermillion present?
I'm getting head nodding in the audience.
Okay, I have a question about discussions that were had with board members for District 65
Hi, Alderman Sufferton, Jonathan Perman.
Yeah, hi, Jonathan.
How are you?
When you met with, I'm good. When you met with Maria Opdeik and John Martin, did the conversation about potential payment of new taxes or any sort of contributions to District 65 and 202 go anywhere?
Contributions beyond what the project would generate naturally from property taxes?
Correct, yeah.
No, no, we really talked about, okay.
Oh, no, okay, I just, I.
No, no, I mean, we did not talk about, that was not undertaken, the discussion beyond what the project will generate naturally from property taxes, that most of which, as you know, accrues to the two districts.
Right, and that's kind of the concern. I think, you know, a lot of the benefits, and like, they are verifiable benefits to the downtown area and to the city, go to the city, but obviously the largest piece of the tax puzzle for Evanston taxpayers are the two school districts. I was just wanting to better understand any discussions that were had with the board, informal capacity or with individual board members.
It was an informal conversation, and we walked through the fiscal economic impact analysis for both districts, which shows that even if you account for some additional students going into both school districts, that the net benefit to the school districts is still significant over a 15-year or even 30-year period, depending on how you calculate it.
Okay, and the comparison was to what is there presently in this proposal?
Well, I mean, the analysis is just for this project. Others have asked the question, well, if nothing is built there, then what happens? And obviously, nobody can predict for sure when that property would, you know, be developed. What we can say is to look back at the history and know that over several decades, in fact, nothing has been developed there.
Got it, and thank you for helping to clarify that. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. So I also cannot support this project, as I've met with developers frequently. It's just, you know, too large for this area. This is a congested block. This is an enormous tower wedged in without setbacks. You know, I could even support height if we had a little more of a, like the Chase Building, there's a plaza around it, but this is right up, you know, right up to the sidewalk. So there's really no breathing room for the community, for the public realm, for the pedestrian feel there, and especially with the setback that should be at four stories ends about halfway, so that 12-story, what I call the sort of the appendage, also just adds to that sort of overbearing feel for the pedestrian experience. And, you know, I'm deeply concerned about the congestion on this block. I think when we do development, we have to do it smart. We have to think about building thriving, livable neighborhoods. I think we've made some mistakes in the past with development. And really, and it's not, I appreciate working with developers. We've had frequent meetings, so it's not on them. It's really on us if we make a mistake. If the development doesn't work, it's our fault. And I don't think we've done enough reflecting on developments that have worked and those that haven't, those that have sort of killed city blocks. I know there was a development in the past where many of the small businesses opposed it, and rightly so. That particular block is not very, doesn't bring much foot traffic anymore. So I also want to address the affordable housing. I, of course, want affordable housing. I have spoken with the developers to ask if, because they are getting tremendous variances, we could say we will accept 15% affordable housing, which would bring the city out of the gate on year one, 75% of our property taxes of what we would get. At 20%, we won't see any increase in property taxes for years, for many years. In fact, because the years while they're building, and then there's three years after completion, it will remain at the same property tax as what they collect as a drive-through empty lots. And yet, we're going to be, you know, we're talking 400, I guess, and 19 units now. So normally, a project this scale, and I was really willing to negotiate, like, if we can get our property taxes, but, you know, a property this scale wedged in on this block, creating this congestion, and it's going to cause a strain on us instead of offering relief. Usually, when we get something like that, a big project's like, oh, great, we're going to get some property relief. And I hope everyone understands, it's not for 30 years that we, until we see our full property taxes on this. And it's really not until about year 13, when we start to see some substantial property taxes, but not our full property taxes. So, and, you know, I know one resident mentioned about our, being a low affordability community, and that means that we're at, the communities that were designated as low affordable communities for this are under 40%. Evanston, I want to increase affordable housing. Don't get me wrong, that's one of the reasons I ran to be a council member, but I want to increase affordable housing that the community needs, which isn't really studios in these sort of high-rise gated communities. We need homes. We need multi-bedroom units for families. So we're at about 20% right now, affordable housing. We have the most on, as of any community along the lake. And we should want to increase that number appropriately. Right now, what this is going to do, when we start, you know, shifting that burden onto residents, we're going to create more of an affordability crisis. That's going to, it's going to affect all property owners, even properties downtown that are trying to rent store spaces. Those rents will go up because the shift, the burden will shift. And, but it's going to shift most and hurt the most on those that have the least, on working people, on low-income people, thereby pushing out more people from our city. And that's what my concern is. I would love, I would consider this if we could get to a 15% instead of what's called the tier one of the program. I would consider it because our schools, our city, our residents so desperately need that relief. So, you know, that's something I, as we continue to talk this evening, I'd like to, you know, perhaps put forward that tier one instead of a tier three. And I know when I spoke with the developers about it, basically, as well, it's not going to, you know, we can't do it because of our bottom line, our ROI. We insist on giving more affordable housing because we can make more money that way. I mean, it's a little twisted, no? I mean, think about it, right? So usually, it's a community benefit. We get affordable housing. So I'm concerned we're not getting the community benefit we should get. We're talking about a high-rise, like, three times our zoning height, the massing, and everything else, and yet, we're going to be basically subsidizing in large part these affordable units. And be clear, yes, 80, is it 84? 84? But it's really what we're paying for, in essence, though, the subsidies is for 42. We would get at least 42 anyway and get our full property taxes. So I would rather see us getting those taxes, setting aside money for land trust, for permanent affordable housing, for a circuit breaker program to help our low-income people remain in their homes in Evanston. We have many people moving out all the time because they're being forced out. I'd like to see us have those funds to appropriately address the affordable housing needs of our community and not just pack them in a bunch of, you know, studios and one-bedrooms in a high-rise. So I think we could still have 42 units if we could, or even more at 15% if we could agree to tier three. So for the moment, that's all.
Councilmember Burns, followed by Herakakis.
Packing people into a studio or a one-bedroom, and this is from somebody that claims to know about affordable housing and how it works, is to suggest as if people would allow larger families than what our ordinance allows in one-bedrooms and studios, which is incredibly inaccurate and confusing and really inappropriate for elected officials supposed to know better than that to say that. People who are in one-bedroom studios are people who appropriately fit in one-bedrooms and studios. And so for somebody that has lifted up Wesley on many occasions, you should know that the vast majority of people in the Wesley situation needed one-bedrooms, that we couldn't find, affordable ones, right? Because there were a lot of seniors who lived alone, who, who needed to find affordable one-bedroom units that, and they couldn't find them. That's like the majority of people that, that we worked to rehouse in Evanston. So, for somebody who claims to understand affordable housing, you should know, we need it all. We don't just need housing for family, although we need that as well. We need housing for seniors, we need housing for families, we need one-bedrooms, we need studios. We need it all, Councilmember Kelly, and now, and affordable. And so, again, it's frustrating because you hear people who act as though they understand these issues, by the sound of it, they don't, who just make all these statements that are just inaccurate. And they do it to, and it's very confusing to the public because you can't follow everything that you hear, and it, you're hearing a lot of conflicting things. We need it all. I can tell you without question, we need studios, we need one-bedrooms, we need it all. The, I think it's important to establish, I heard somebody say the most important thing, that it's appropriate for the area, which I can, I agree with that. I think just as important is it has to be financed. If it cannot be financed, we won't get the project. And so, I'm also frustrated because there's a bunch of people who aren't architects, who aren't developers, who don't under, who have never had to finance a project and get it to market, who claim as though they understand the economics around these type of developments, and yet, provide no evidence. I have nothing in writing from Councilmember Kelly looking, like, breaking down the pro forma and why what she is proposing would work for this site or anybody else on this, on this day is. That, that, that should be a fundamental, like, those are the things that I asked for from the developers. Let me see the pro forma, let me see the numbers, let me better understand it, which is why my conversations with Stephen Yass and the developers has been productive. Because we're trying to figure out, like, how can we realistically drive down costs? That's where the mass timber came in. Because if you, if you look at mass timber, and they've agreed to look at it in between meetings, what it says is that although the mass timber itself is not necessarily less expensive than steel or concrete, that it could reduce the overall construction time, which could lower costs, and it also reduces the amount of construction workers that you need on site, which could reduce the cost. That's a, that's a real potential solution as a way to lower costs. And so I think what's important to establish is that it's not that the developers haven't looked into all the things we've asked them to do. They've looked into it, and they're saying they can't finance it. Construction costs alone, I know for non-residential construction, and so I'm curious to know what it's been for residential construction, has gone up 40% since, since COVID. This is real. These are the numbers that, that they have to deal with. And as, they said many, on many times, the, I think they said, like, the 7% is, is what the profit is, which they're saying is, is pretty standard, you know, for these type of deals, for, you know, for, for people who are investing in it. So, that's the question that I have is, can we establish, why is it not financeable to, to go from the 20% to 15%, which Councilmember Kelly is, is suggesting? Or any of, number of the other things that, that, that we've asked you to look into? So if somebody can speak to that, please. And how much time do I have?
Thank you, Councilmember Burns. You did ask us to-
Can you just identify yourself for the record, please?
Sorry, thank you, Mary. Chris Dillian with Campbell Coyle, on behalf of the development team. You're correct, you did ask us to do a comparative analysis, looking at the various abatement thresholds. We did complete that analysis. Our analysis indicates that the 20% figure, as currently modeled, is the only scheme that is financially viable. You also referenced, which is correct, we are tracking two key metrics as it relates to this project. A return on cost, a simple metric that is a standard metric in our industry, as well as a total cost per unit. And so we're tracking those two data figures to ensure that the project is financeable. It does no good for us to approve a project, or for this council to approve a project, that we can't move forward. And I suspect there's already projects in Evanston that are not financeable in today's current inflationary environment with tariffs, with the other challenges and headwinds facing the construction industry. And so, those are the key data points that we're tracking. The, the project that we have put forth, the changes that we've, that we've navigated with, and discussed with many of you, reflect a project that we believe is still actionable. But time is of the essence, because it is a very challenging financing environment.
And can you just explain in more detail, just what, why is it difficult? Why don't the numbers work? Like, what is?
Yeah, so, at high level, the, the cost for inclusionary housing is significant. Every unit of inclusionary housing does not contribute in a positive revenue standpoint to the overall project. Meaning those, those units, meaning the market rate units effectively subsidize the inclusionary units. And even with the tax abatement, of course, there's a, there's a, an advantage with the structure of the tax abatement that enables those units to be constructed. But even with the tax abatement, the inclusionary housing is still negative, has, still has a negative impact on the overarching pro forma. And so, the 20% tax abatement level, at that level of, of support on the project, it allows us to get to those key metrics that I had mentioned. As we look at the other scenarios, and by losing the, the sort of positive financial impact of the tax abatement, we slip below those key metrics. This is also why we've been really focused, as we've made changes to the project, to make sure that we are still targeting a sufficient number of units to achieve a price per square, or, I'm sorry, a price per unit that is still financeable in today's environment. And so, we're sort of looking at all of these items, they're all sort of baked into the pro forma, but it, you know, it's a sort of an iterative analysis. But at the end of the day, we are, we're kind of on a razor-thin edge here, trying to advance something that we feel is financeable, but, but the alternatives simply are not.
And I think inherent in these discussions, there's always a feeling that developers are greedy, and you're running off with all these profits. And so can you compare what you, what your profit projections are for this project compared to industry standard?
Well, I'll, I'll give you a benchmark. I was touring a project in Chicago that is targeting a 7.5% return on cost. That also has significant affordable housing. It actually is receiving TIF subsidy from the city of Chicago. We are below that, we've been transparent, we're, we're targeting a 7% return on cost. And so, again, this is with guidance from the folks that we work with, from a capital markets perspective. We have to raise equity and debt for the project. This is the feedback that we are getting. I would also say, we've been pursuing this project for 11 years. And so, if, if, that's not a sound financial model as a businessperson to invest 11 years into a project with no returns thus far. So, we've been pursuing this because we're passionate about it, because we really feel that we've been presenting something that aligns with the values of Evanston. I think there are some gross misinterpretations of how developers profit on projects and who receives rent on projects. There's a whole cast of businesses that participate in these projects. Banks, investors, architects, the construction team. There are a lot of different people that participate in these projects, including a number of Evanston-based businesses. And so, I, I think there are misperceptions about how we profit on a project. But at the end of the day, I can assure you that we are targeting industry-standard benchmarks that are necessary to make this project move forward. And we're, again, it's a razor-thin edge right now.
And, and so what I'm hearing is, because sometimes we talk about this as if the city is like, the, the reality is that for this project to work, it needs, you got private equity that has certain things that they're looking for. That's where the 7% comes in, as I understand it.
Correct.
And then you have banks that are also looking for something. And these are obviously very complicated formulas, which this body doesn't necess, doesn't have any firsthand experience with. I don't think, I don't know anybody on here that has that experience. And I'm not saying that you, you can't better understand that through conversations with the developers, but that's why I'm looking for somebody to bring up, like, actual numbers that they found in order to, that can help us save costs. The last just quick thing I want to say real quick is the burden will shift. And this is the last thing I'll say. But I think this is an important issue, and we should allow for more time on this. But this idea about the burden will shift, I, I don't understand it. The only way I can understand it is if you assume, because that's all you can do, that this site will be developed in, in the future, in, in some other way that you are more agreeable to, which is speculation, it's pure speculation, right? As, as Jonathan Parman said, like, the, what we can go off of as a council, I think the appropriate thing to go off of is history. And we know that this site has not developed, and, and the conditions for this type of project to work have, if anything, have tightened, right, since after the pandemic. So, it's pure speculation to assume that this project will develop in the, in the kind of magical way that you see it in your, in your head. And, and so for this, to expect a professional body, this corporate authority, to, to be able to make decisions off of pure speculation, I think is, is just inappropriate. And it's not, it's not the way that body should operate. The burden, this idea about the burden will shift, it almost assumes, again, let's set aside the idea that the speculation, that some other project will happen. If you don't believe that, then the only other thing that I can think you mean is, is if you think that this site, these sites are bringing in money already, right? That I could get. If the sites were bringing in, let's say, $2 million right now, and then because of this abatement program, we were going from collecting $2 million, and not necessarily the city, but the districts as well, to $0 or $22,000, or whatever the number is, then that I can understand. It's 20-something thousand today, it'll be 20-something thousand after we approve this. That number won't change. So it's not like we're relying on, on taxes that we're going to lose out on that have to be now paid for by all the, the other taxing entities within the city. That's not the case. We're getting the same amount, it's 27,000 or whatever it is today, it'll be 27,000 tomorrow. The, and, and, and then I hear about, like, water infrastructure. I got, I just talked to Darryl King, I sent an email to him. He's saying that the, that, that all of that is, is, is covered. What Darryl said is that the, regarding the proposed 605 Davis Development, the preliminary engineering plans indicates that the high-rise water, sanitary, and storm sewer service will connect to the existing water and combine sewer mains in Davis Street. These mains have adequate capacity to serve the building. So they don't need to upgrade the systems at all. And in addition to that, I think they're still paying into water and sewers. So I'm, I'm trying to understand where, where, where's the burden shift? I don't understand that. And so, Councilmember Kelly, I know you're signed up to speak again. If you could please be very specific about those burden shifts, and do it in a way that doesn't speculate something that you can't, you can't possibly know what's going to happen in the distant future. Thank you.
Councilmember Hatakakis, followed by Davis.
Sure. I'm an enthusiastic yes on this. It was really nice to see so many community members come out and speak positively about the project. As I've been on council and been on Housing and Community Development Committee, which is my favorite committee, no offense to anybody up here. But, you know, we, we work with community partners for affordable housing, and they are the nonprofit that administers our inclusionary housing waitlist. So for people who are, you know, watching this at home, we have over 900 people on the list, waitlist, and over 300 of those folks are what qualify as Evanston, Evanston preferred, like, waitlist people. And those are folks who either live in Evanston or work here. And we've also learned that many of the other people who don't qualify as being in Evanston have Evanston ties. So these are people, so the other 600 people plus people, many of those have been displaced or have family ties here. I think a lot of times, you know, when we're sitting up here, you hear these numbers, and 84 units, it's just a number, but that's like 84 households, and that's super impactful. And, you know, a lot of times, we have the privilege of waiting and, you know, deliberating. And these are people who have been waiting on the list, and they need housing, and they could really use it. And this is something that's transformative for families. And a family can be, you know, one person, two people, a couple. So this, I think, is a really important project for all the other reasons that people listed. But I just wanted people to know a little bit more about that inclusionary list.
Councilmember Davis.
I think my only comment is that, like, I, I feel like I agree with some of Councilmember Burns's sentiments, but one of the things that kind of stands out for me is that I'm aware that I'm not an architect. But that's why we have the commissions and boards that we do. And that's why I think that the Land Use Commission should be given some degree of deference, particularly on aspects relating to land, to architecture. And it was also why, when we were talking about who we would put on the Land Use Commission, that I was really insistent that we have people with the expertise and the experience that we don't have as council members. And I think that we agreed that we have good representation for different viewpoints in addition to technical expertise. And so, I, it gives me a lot of pause that this came through with a negative recommendation. And that's it, thank you.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Kelly. Councilmember, your time has expired, so if you could try to be efficient, please.
So I believe Bobby spoke for 13 and a half minutes, so I'd like equal time. And I'd also, with respect, like you to ask to please refrain from ad hominem attacks, Bobby, if you don't mind, and just stick to the topic that we're debating on. Thank you. So I'm going to read a comment, since I think I have time, given the amount of time that Bobby spoke, from Drush Mabadi, local developer. "It is hugely ironic that the city is in the red, closing schools, has a consultant retained to advise on zero-based budgeting, but God help us if we deviate one inch from our efforts to meet Evanston's affordable housing objectives. The project is the opportunity to set the mark for robust agenda for more affordable housing. By approving this at 15%, we can embrace many more developments of all sizes. The city has other future challenges, such as a new police facility. We need to think in the moment about how we, we as a city can meet the various objectives without letting one overtake another. The council should ask how many projects can be sustained at this level? One more, one more, five more? How many times will we need to jump up the tax levying to meet shortfalls not considered? We need responsible governing that meets the challenges of the day without blindly ignoring the consequences. Approve it at 15%." So I just want to make a point that I don't blame the developers at all. And you guys are doing your jobs, and, you know, I think you're doing a good job at it, and I've enjoyed working with you. I don't blame you, again, it's on us, it's the council members. I've been around long enough to understand, you know, how this, this goes. We had the legacy building at, that came in at 25 stories. But it was eventually, we worked together, and that was something else that I appreciate. I've had many developments in my ward now, and in every case, there was some maybe resistance at the beginning, but we worked together, and we came back, and I came in supporting it at something that was more amenable and agreeable to the community and to the, to the residents. That hasn't happened as much here. I feel like there's been a lot of work to line up the votes and not work as much with the council member and the constituents who live right around there. Many, not all, but many who are deeply concerned about the impacts on congestion. Again, the legacy, they were at 25 stories, they also said they couldn't afford to go lower. We ended up at 13 stories, so, and with a much better development after working considerably together on that. And there are developments going up in many cities that are not necessarily tapping into the 20% or the, or the 15%, and they're making it work. So, so I'm just going to leave it at that. I do feel we are in a situation where this particular city, we're at 20% affordable housing, we're a city where we have so many residents here in need. If this were maybe in Kennelworth or Winnetka, we wouldn't see the kind of impact that I'm fearful that will happen over time. We need these tax dollars. And this is prime, we are, Evanston is a very, is very coveted territory for, for developers. This, this plot of land will be developed. So, that's all for the moment, if there's other people who want to speak.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Well, then, in that case, I'd like to, there are no more speakers?
No.
I'd like to propose an amendment to the ordinance, to, to require 15% instead of 20% so that we can, in fact, garner 75% of our property taxes starting year one, which is a lot better than, you know, than what we'd be getting now, like, millions more. So, I'd like to propose amending this to a 15% so that we can, and by the way-
Can you send the amendment in writing, please?
Sure.
Councilmember Kelly. So- So Councilmember Rogers made a request that the, you're asking for the developer to respond, is that correct? That the developer respond to this proposal now, rather than, I think, I'm guessing you're saying, rather than like, take a big pause, figure out how to draft it, get a second, have a debate, and then? So let's, let's start, if that's okay with you, Councilmember Kelly. I'm happy to defer to Councilmember Rogers's request.
Again, Chris Dillian with Campbell Coyle, and Vermillion Campbell, the developer. As we had shared with the memo that I know we've shared with several folks, Councilmember Burns, you had requested it originally. We did look at the 15% abatement level, that project is not financeable.
That project is not financeable.
So, I think that's another question, just from up here. I guess there's a question as to whether there's a second, uh, for the motion, which is probably good information before we move forward. Is there a second to Councilmember Kelly's motion? The motion fails for lack of a second.
Then I'd like to make another amendment.
Go ahead.
Um, I, so our affordable housing, um, our inclusionary housing ordinance states that for developments that are receiving a subsidy, we demand 30% instead of double what ours is, is 15%. We ask for 30%. Um, this is an incredible subsidy, but it's just in the form of a property tax abatement. So, I, you know, I don't know why our, you know, I, I don't think it's right that our inclusionary housing ordinance should accept this sort of a, um, break, but, um, but on others, we, we say you have to give double. So, um, I'd like to see an increase in the affordable housing units for what we're paying for and for the scale of this building and the variances we're getting. So, I'd like to ask that we apply our inclusionary housing ordinance, um, where we say it's 30 instead of 15, if you're getting a, a public subsidy, which this is. So, I'll wait to see if there's a second before I send that in.
Is there a second for this motion?
I'll second that.
Councilmember Davis seconds. Uh, okay, so in that case, I think we'll need you to send it in writing, please.
David, if we could request the same response from the developer while we're waiting.
Uh, Councilmember Newsma, in this instance, has asked the developer to respond to this as Councilmember Kelly is drafting her amendment.
Uh, for the record, David Reeifman, counsel for the developer. The IHO proposal here is not a subsidy, a subsidy is a direct payment or otherwise.
I don't think the question is a legal interpretation of our IHO. I think Councilmember Kelly acknowledges your legal interpretation, but, uh, proposes that perhaps we should have drafted the IHO differently. I think Councilmember Newsma is asking the updated version of the Councilmember Rogers's question, which is what's the financial response to this proposal? Is that correct, Councilmember Newsma?
Yes. Uh, the financial implications of going from 20 to 30% would obviously have an adverse impact on the pro forma returns. It would drop the threshold rate of return below what is financeable in today's marketplace. Um, but for some sort of incentive, like tax increment financing or additional height, I don't see a scenario where that's remotely financeable.
Or increasing the rent on the market value units.
Uh, yes, but I don't think that that would be supported by, I, I think that would be beyond what the market could bear.
Councilmember Kelly, Councilmember Rogers has his light on. Do you, are you okay with allowing to speak while you continue to draft your, Councilmember Rogers?
Yeah, I, this is a problem for me, that we continue to try to renegotiate things from the dais. This was exactly the point I brought up last time. Um, we've gotten ourselves into legal trouble for doing so. Um, I think it's problematic for us to continue to do so. Um, the, uh, the proposal, like I said, I can't support it, but I'm prepared to vote no and let the other votes kind of fall where they may. Um, so I, uh, I, I couldn't support this amendment.
In the interest of time, I'm going to allow this, because I think this amendment's not going to pass. I, I have to say, um, what you sent, if the amendment passes, we're going to have to then start, start again and like draft it for real. But let's, let's just take a vote on the amendment, Councilmember Isles.
Yeah, well, while we're waiting, I just want to point out, the developers have said that it's not viable at that level. We have a development in place that's providing all kinds of benefits to the community. Affordable housing, increased supply, customers for downtown. The incentive program's working the way it's meant to. This has been a vacant property for 50 years. But there is some urgency to it, and it's not just the urgency of the developers. There's a direct correlation between the supply of housing in a community and the number of unhoused in the community. So, when we're done this meeting, I'm going to go to the shelter that I manage, and there are 55 people on the waitlist. There's 30 people that we can serve, there's 55 people on the waitlist. And I know that at Connections for the Homeless, they've stopped taking names for the margarita, because they've hit 100, and they can no longer accept any names. So, there's urgency in our community. There's people that are going unhoused, there's SNAP benefits that are getting cut off. And so, playing games with the developer to see what we can possibly get out of them, I'm disappointed we lost two floors. I'm disappointed we lost two affordable housing units. I'm disappointed that we lost some bike parking. I don't want to play any more games. I want to have a vote on this, and we'll see where we're at.
Okay. So-
All right, I'm going to ask the clerk to take the roll on the-
I'm sorry, I just wanted to comment. I want to say we are having a serious affordability crisis in our city, and that's where I'm coming from. Our residents are suffering. I'm sorry, but I just, I don't want to be, like, I, I know when we can differ, but I-
No, Councilmember, everyone gets, everyone gets to share their view, everybody, not just you. Uh, would the clerk please take the roll on the amendment? And should it pass, I'm going to then ask us to take a pause so that the council member can, uh, can draft it in a way that it's fully interpretable. But, would the clerk please take the roll?
Do you want to read what she sent?
At this time, the amendment says, "I'm requesting 30% affordable housing units onsite for the 605 high-rise building." Um, correct.
Yes. Councilmember Isles?
No.
Councilmember Newsma?
No.
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Saffredin?
No.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
No.
Councilmember Hadekakis?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
With two voting in favor and seven voting against, the motion does not carry. And I, uh, I just, I want to reiterate this unrelated to this issue. I think it's very important for transparency and, uh, a work process and work product that are, we have clearly written amendments and proposals that are, uh, that are not potentially up to interpretation. And so, I will continue to, uh, tighten the screws on that, um, interpretation of the rules going forward. Uh, Councilmember, there's two, sorry, first of all, Councilmember Harris, is your light on? I can't tell.
It was, but you read the motion.
Okay. So, I think Councilmember Isles is the only light at this time.
I'd like to vote on them.
Would the clerk please ta- Sorry, would the clerk please take the roll on, and this is introduction of ordinance 66-0-25, which has not been amended.
Councilmember Isles?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Saffredin?
No.
Councilmember Davis?
No.
Councilmember Rogers?
No.
Councilmember Hadekakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
With five voting in favor and four voting against, the motion carries, and ordinance 66-0-25 is introduced. This brings us to call of the wards, Councilmember Isles.
Oh, um, we have a meeting, a joint meeting on the budget tomorrow at the Prieto Center. Oh, no, sorry, Wednesday. Um, I just, this meeting, I thought this meeting went a lot longer than, um, than I thought it did. On Wednesday, uh, we have a meeting, I think it's 6:30, if I'm correct? Six, six o'clock, sorry, uh, at the Prieto Center.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, there is a joint third and fourth ward meeting, uh, Tuesday, November 4th, 7 o'clock at Robert Crown. The main item on the agenda is going to be, uh, the Putting Assets to Work Initiative. Uh, Councilmember Isles and I will also be passing out whistles, uh, for use with ICE warnings. That, that is all.
Councilmember Burns.
I, I hate that I have to respond to this again, but, but, um, uh, addressing misinformation is an important, is important to me. Um, there was a gentleman during a public comment that mentioned that the city, that, that, that everything the Wesley tenants received, they had to fight for. And, and so, I, I looked at my, I know that wasn't true, but I looked at an email just to confirm the date. I think this was back in March 2024, prior to the meeting that we had with the tenants to tell them that the building was unsafe and that we were going to, we needed to evacuate it for their own safety. And by the way, one of the stairwells, one of the balconies just collapsed today. Uh, so the inju- the engineering reports that we received that were concerned that the stairs and balconies would collapse, that happened today, by the way. And, um, but, but this was, that, that email was, uh, that I found was sent prior to us meeting with them, letting them know that the building was unsafe. And in that document, it laid out all the benefits, um, that the city ultimately provided them. It laid out, um, rental assistance, it laid out storage assistance, it laid out, uh, moving assistance, it laid out food stipends, it laid all of that out. Why did it lay all that out? Because it was important to us, myself, staff, Connections for the Homeless, that going into a meeting, telling people that they had to evacuate from a place that some had lived for 10, 20, 30 years, we didn't want to come empty-handed with nothing. We didn't want to, we didn't want to, you know, put that off on them to, to decide on their own what they needed. And so, we came, we put, there was a lot of time and intentionality put into thinking about what they may need to try to ease the transition as best we could. So, they, they didn't fight for anything. And then at that same meeting, we said, as, as I think anybody should facilitate in this type of discussion, if there is anything else that you need, if there is anything we have not covered, please let us know. And so, the minor change, changes to benefits between meetings were invited by the city. There was no fight, there was no struggle in it at all. Uh, and so, that is a complete mischaracterization of what happened. And, and it's important to me that, that we continue to keep the, the facts straight, um, on that issue. We have a ward meeting, um, this, uh, this Thursday, uh, 7:00 PM, virtual. Thank you.
Councilmember Saffredin.
Uh, yeah, just joint ward meeting on the budget, uh, 6:30 PM on November 4th.
Councilmember Davis.
Um, I also have a joint ward meeting, uh, coming up, I think, next week. And I just wanted to remind people to please continue to stay engaged regards to, um, school closures and the conversation. And to, uh, please, if you do not already receive my newsletter, be on the lookout for the next one, because it's very detailed. And I think the last thing is that, um, if anybody listening has any concerns with regards to ICE, please do reach out to the city or your city council members. We've received a lot of good information and resources. We're trying our hardest to, um, be proactive about all things happening on the federal level. That's it.
Councilmember Rogers.
Thank you. Um, real quick, uh, as Councilmember Isles mentioned, um, October 29th, Wednesday, 6:00 PM, Prieto Center, we'll be having a joint ward meeting to discuss the budget. Um, I would like to take this opportunity to thank, uh, City Manager Stowe and all the department heads, um, Police, Public Works, Economic Development, and probably some other departments that I'm not drawing right now, um, for their, um, focus on really cleaning up Howard Street and helping, um, get some of the issues taken care of down there. I really appreciate that. And, uh, finally, I also just want to acknowledge, um, all the people who showed up tonight to speak, um, from Ask Me and For the Library. Um, those are important, those are important roles. The library does serve an important function, and we need to make sure that we do, uh, do what's right there. And I know that we are working on that. And, um, it's, it's kind of a weird space for us to be in, um, in terms of what we're responsible for and what we can affect. Um, so, uh, thank you to all of them for showing up tonight as well.
Councilmember Hadekakis.
Um, as has been said before, budget meeting on Wednesday with the third, eighth, and ninth ward. Um, and then on Thursday, here at, um, 9:09, at 5:30, there will be the City School Liaison Committee. Um, so if folks want to, um, see us, um, and, you know, I think there's been definitely, we've gotten a lot of feedback that, um, we need to work, work better together. And so, um, hopefully that'll be the start of, um, kind of rebooting those relationships.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. Um, a joint ward meeting next week, um, on the budget, and that, you will get a mailer this week. And I also want to thank all the librarians and library staff for being here. Looking forward to that collaborative work with the library board. Um, and I also want to encourage residents to continue to call in if they have any sightings of ICE or anybody else harassing residents, and to also call 911. Um, and I think this is really important, that we have our police department there verifying identification affiliation, um, hopefully ensuring that there's an excessive force being used, and making a record. We need to get records made, data as much as we can on the, on these instances. Please call 911. Um, that's all. Thanks.
Councilwoman Harris.
Thank you. Um, November 4th, we will have a joint, um, budget meeting, second and sixth ward at Robert Crown. And then, we will try to transition to, um, Putting Assets to Work, even though we had it last week, if people missed it. That's it, that's it.
Uh, and now, with nothing further to come before us, the October 27th meeting of City Council stands adjourned.